Land Government Demarcation Board.
Secondly, Land Government Board.
City Mayor.
We want that to be changed as well.
We want independent municipal demarcation authority.
We want to change the name of the board.
There is change with this as well. We are taking this name from the constitution. And now the board will be like other constitutions as well.
The board stipulates that there will be demarcation from wards and municipalities.
Where it needs to be.
The board stipulates that there will be demarcation from wards and municipalities. Where it needs to be. But what we want to do mostly is to put an end to the protests that we usually have from the communities. We know that this has been said to you before, you have everything with you in your hands. But most importantly today, we are here to hear from you as the public. As stipulated in the constitution. We will let you voice your concerns and then we will take it from you. We are here today, tomorrow we are moving to East London. And then the other day we are moving to Eka Becha. Then we will be done with the Eastern Cape tour. It is not necessary that the only people who will be talking with or to us be the only you. Organizations as well that have interest in the demarcation issues would do reach to us as well. And other people are not here, they do write to us as well. It is not our first time to listen to people's concerns. We have done this before. We are continuing. We will go to all the provinces of the country. You all are very lucky, we started with you. This is your meeting. As the chairperson. As the chairperson and as my team as well, we will listen to all of you. I know some of the people here. I will name you one, two or three. So don't be surprised if I call you and say three.
By the way, my English name. Is five.
I was given this name at home.
So can I now, I was trying to help you to settle.
I would like each and everyone to raise your hand, I will name you one or two.
Number one.
You are number one.
Number two.
You are number two.
Number three.
You are number three.
Number four.
Number four at the back. Number five will be the last one.
Number six.
Number six.
Then Inkos is our number seven.
Will be number seven. Thank you very much. Thank you. Let me introduce myself. With my real name. My name is Mtembu Kamabono. I am from Amakwecha Traditional Council. There are just two points I will raise on, I will talk on. The first one will be the proposed bill. And then secondly, I will speak on the submission that has been made by Amakwecha. On this proposed bill. We were very lucky. We were lucky that we had time to peruse the bill. We appreciate the committee for bringing this bill to us. The most thing that we support about this bill. Is the change of the time of the demarcation. Our thinking is that this will in some way help us and support us. The changing of the demarcation from time to time. Has made us to have instability. Much more in the traditional authorities.
And the service delivery. As Amakwecha Traditional Council, we fully support the proposal. The second issue that I would like to speak on.
We have made a submission on the demarcation wards. It has been divided into three. There are four wards.
Ward one, two up to four.
All these four wards, they fall under Mtabangulu municipality.
Ward twenty-five.
And then there's ward twenty-five. Which is under Mzimvubu municipality.
Ward number twelve.
And then there's ward twelve.
And ward twenty-five.
And ward twenty-five. They fall under Mshonto municipality. This has caused us so many problems and challenges. When you move from Emakwecha to Mtabangulu.
Ah, usuka Emakwecha usia Kukumbu Mshonto.
And when you move from Emakwecha to Mshonto.
What we as Amakwecha have noticed and realized is that the place that is central that we use is. Is more accessible.
That is much more closer to us for economy. We do not cross any river when we go to Mtabangulu. We cross Mzimvubu to get to Mtabangulu. And we cross the river itina to Mshonto.
It's a mission yet to as Amakwecha Traditional Council. So we are so okay as wards.
Is that all the wards that are under Mtabangulu. And the two others that fall under Mshonto.
We did that submission with the demarcation board. The consultation was done.
What we are here to do is to reiterate to you that the consultation. We have gone everywhere that we are supposed to go.
The consulting the public. Here is support and the submission.
The public supports the meeting.
Thank you. Number two.
Thank you so much. I'm grateful for this opportunity. I will start here, I do support the bill. I have a request. When they say ward two, we have a problem. I stay in Quizi which is closer to Ngangelizwe. The funny thing is, as I am based in Ward two, there's Ward one across the street. This creates a problem in the ward.
Because you will see the budget of the ward.
Because of this, you will notice that the budget of the ward will only benefit those in Ngangelizwe. Thinking that those in Quizi do not experience the same problems and those in.
Because of the proposed bar, why? Land Government is bar semi-epen or something like that.
My biggest concern is why these wards are differentiated, you'll find that there's Mzimvuka extension, there's also Ngangelizwe. For example, there's Ngangelizwe in Quizi, they are all different. It applies to KST and Mbashi. Because of this, you will find that we do not have electricity in Mbanduli and it's a different case when you go to Mbashi. I do support the bill, however, my concern is the request that I mentioned. Thank you Chairperson, let me introduce myself. I am from Portent Jones Municipality. Let me first acknowledge the bill, your board before I can proceed. The huge problem with this bill, your board, is that you come as a committee without consulting us as community. This creates a great loss to us as community, we are grateful that at least now it will last for ten years. We have a village called Mevanie VT on Ward eight. Where I was with the community. They had an unfortunate circumstance where they had to fall under Nyandini without them knowing. The community greatly refuses to fall under Nyandini community, they want to be under Portent Jones. We had made a request to say no to this, your board. We have received letters where we were told that in Musa must fall from under Ward nineteen. We have taken a decision as municipality that the Ward twenty must remain the same. We greatly propose that Portent Jones does not change, we remain with twenty and that you also consult us as community members and not take decisions on your own. I am being advised by the members of the committee that we should take note of the time because we are seeing a great number of communities wanting to voice their opinions. The theme for today, what we are all here for, we are here for independent as Meléyo.
Outer boundaries of municipalities.
The bill.
Yes.
The bill is directly speaking to you guys as you have voiced out your opinions, that's why we are here today. What I'm trying to say that your voices are not irrelevant for the theme that we are here for today. Secondly, when we spoke about your board. The bill is trying to respond to all the issues that you as a community are having and are raising on this particular day. In other words, we won't say no when you are making examples. But we must look at the time.
Number four.
Thank you Chairperson. Let me first introduce myself. My name is Mzondelili Siluana. From KST. Ward eleven. I work at Ward five. The areas that I would like to focus on.
Chapter three.
Under chapter three of the bill.
Criteria for determination and redetermination of municipal boundaries.
If we look at the chapter three to section four.
Subsection A one.
Subsection A one.
Talks about interdependence of the people.
It talks about how people are depending on each other.
Which situations where maybe you find that.
It's in areas where you find that that it is peri-epen and the others are epen. In those other ones you find that service delivery is not the same as the other area.
But if then you put these people together.
That would put those ones in peri-epen areas to be more of advantage to the service delivery. And then those people would be of advantage. There is a part of the criteria that we are not happy about. Because the peri-epen problems are more or like the same. There was this thing that those people who stay in towns will stay. And then this whole issue of interdependence had no play at all.
And as no one can do, we're limited.
I don't know if I will be limited because I am not from the place.
This person is from Lusiki Siki. We work together at Cocteau. Before the person gets to the municipality that they demarcated to. They used thirty rand to fifty rand to get to Lusiki Siki from their place. Then they move from Lusiki Siki to Port St. John's. And then now this means this person who was putting up this bill was just up there in the paint. We ask that when you do this geography.
Engos.
Thank you.
Number five. Manbulis.
Greetings everyone, greetings the committee. In the wonderful name of Jesus Christ, I greet you all.
Probably. As the eldest person may be around. We will not pretend as if.
We have worked with Mr. Kasa.
And might we say we have worked with them diligently.
My name is Basi Kanonchiza.
Ward Thirty-five.
From Ward Thirty-five.
Today I represent Oraizm Sanzi. I would have appreciated honourable members of the committee. In your opening remarks, Chairperson. If you had also alluded to the fact that. Our representatives, public representatives in the form of councillors. They have also been invited. I'm not by any chance inferring that they are not present. But I would have appreciated a roll call so that some of the things. Which are being said here, they can take them into account. Let me start by saying. This bill. Is a welcome intervention. That Chairperson had alluded to the fact that there are nasty experiences. More especially when it pertains to the municipal demarcation board. I think the first thing which must be welcomed. Is that it seeks to repeal. The nineteen ninety-eight bill. Which in Jengongdo as a Lali.
As a village person.
I would also hasten to add. That that bill. Led to the promulgation. Of the wall-to-wall municipalities, got two thousand. Which we all know the damage it has caused. But going forward, Chairperson. I would like the committee to have regard to section twenty-one subsection two. Of the Municipal Demarcation Act of nineteen ninety-eight. Which states that. Any demarcation or delimitation of wards. Must be consistent. Not only with the act but with other legislation. Now, in this particular regard. The practice, not the act, the practice of our public representatives, that is the municipalities. They are inconsistent. With the Municipal Systems Act. Which clearly states that the municipality must develop a process of public participation. To avoid a situation where one, when he or she feels that she is excluded, might come up and say he or she is proposing demarcation. Number two, Chairperson, long story short. I would also like the committee. To have regard. To section thirty-three.
Section thirty-three.
Of this bill. And rather seek to replace. The wording which begins to say. If I may quote, after the minister. Has published the formula. In terms of section twenty of the Municipal Structures Act. The municipal, I'm sorry, the authority. Must for purposes of an election. After consultation with the electoral commission. Delimit metropolitan municipalities. It would be quite welcome and appreciated. If it would state that rather than. Being councillors. It be communities. So as to instill the sense of ownership. Number two, which is the last point, Chairperson. May the committee have regard to. Section thirty-six. Which in summary states that. The publication. Must be made through media, both print and electronic. But rather the committee must have, must appreciate the fact that there has been now the establishment of municipal. I mean of ward offices. Wherein people, they go in and out and they are in a position to get the information. Not all of us have got access to newspapers. Even though there might be access to community radios and what have you. It must be accepted as a progressive intervention and the most importantly, as you are saying, that it will seek to. Normalize and instill a sense in our communities, Engos. Number, next number. Number six.
Thank you so much. All protocol observed. My name is Nokolo Mna. I am representing Sankoh as a Chairperson of KSD. As Sankoh at KSD. We accept the proposed bill. When the Chairperson opened his mouth, he said that at least the demarcation bill will be, will last for ten years. This will greatly assist us as Sankoh. Where will this assist us? When we are doing the IDP as wards. I want to make an example with two wards. We have Ward Fourteen. On the previous election government. He was on a different ward. They were told that they will be given electricity. The portion is on a different ward this year. Yes. They were number one on the criteria on the previous elections. This will bring a great change and assistance to different wards if it takes ten years. Will be singing the same song. Forward with progress, forward with progress, Sankoh. Thank you very much.
Number seven.
Thank you, Chairperson. Greetings to you and the committee. And everyone in the hall. My name is Malgas. I must applaud the fact that as members of the parliament, if there are any problems or challenges, you come together and bring solutions to us as committees. Thank you for that, Parliament. Firstly, this demification, I beg your pardon. Firstly, this. The norm of the demarcation really divides community. You'll find that we have different wards if maybe we fall under the king, the other ones will be on the other ward.
I think if it bases here should be. Cuba, it services, imagine any ward, you know what, council or progressive in terms of, in the same community. It was development.
This will, this will cause great division because early in the list of progress, the other one will not progress. This will also cause great division among the leaders because it will look like the other leader is not progressing, the other one is progressive. Unfortunately, we pay rates as we are in the township.
It's not our choice, it's an act, a term of party rate.
You'll find that the same people in the community are building luxury houses while they are not paying any rates. If you look at the Ward One. There are luxury houses just across. The, the norm of the bill should accommodate all the villages. They must all be the same. If we are paying rates, we must all pay rates.
So these are the challenges as we call you. Otherwise, you know, it bill incorrect because it's progressive in terms of looking, how do we go forward? So that, I can assessment about the final product, acceptable with community. It's all well as though a band, but we call a band win and I think is proper and fit. Now that, the final product is like this. How do you feel about it before implementation, Engos?
We would love that you as a parliament, you report back to us on the progress and final arrangements. Thank you very much. We would love to call upon the chief. Chief Sange. Thank you. Greetings to the house at large. Let me introduce myself. My name is Ndombeke Sangele. I am from the Mchahabe. I lead Zibula in Kumakala. Under Amalati municipality. I work underneath. I show great appreciation to the bill, especially to us as the chiefency. The norm of the bill has great, has caused great division. You'll find that the other one is Amalati. Where I'm sitting at, I'm under Amalati. The same nation, you'll find that it's under Buffalo City. You'll find great division between Amalati and Buffalo City. As a nation, we do appeal that the difference. The issue of. It's really challenging, especially looking at the role of justice and S A P S. Because of the norm of the bill, you'll find out that some of the residents, they go to different police services.
And Kwasu Kango Kunditi Ndi Bubukos. Nditigisata soba, Ndimnagulendawo, Ndichalako Kuyon Dungungos. Ndi Panseku Amalati, Nditizonge Izindo, Mazenzuwe, Amalati. Even as Kwasu Kelo Ndo, Ngayele, Ngayele, Nte To Wukon. See, I'm very again Kungellela, Ekuza Demoketwa Ngayo, See, I'm very like Akuru, See, I'm Vissana, Nalepili, Engos.
As chief and see, we grew. Bill and we are grateful to you as a parliament for bringing this to us. It will greatly, will greatly see the support and progress in our communities. Those who have just arrived, we are, we have just finished the first round. Maybe those who have just joined us, they are probably wondering what was happening or what was the agenda for today? Today, we came to you. We are here to hear your views on the new bill that has been proposed. Ikamala Ayo, Nte To Ozimeleyo, Oteba, Oteba, Ukutandwa, Kwemita. That's where we are. We have asked the house to show their hands so that they voiced their opinions. We were few at the time, so we had few hands or few people that voiced out their opinions. There was no timeframe. Now we will have the timeframe. You will not exceed five minutes when you are voicing out your concerns. We want you to stick on the bill and the agenda. Iboard, Yoktandwa Kwemita. If it has not come to your community, if you are maybe in K S D, do not worry, the board will come to you. The board, if maybe you are from Portent Jones, do not worry, sit back and relax, it will come to you. Before we can call upon those who will voice out their opinions. I would love to introduce. Uteba, who was sitting right close to me. Her name is Anomfengu, Sia. Sia, Soputu. Soputu. Who is the speaker of the municipality of K S D? Another member is coming in. U Somlomo. U Mamutapa. From the O R Tamba. District municipality. One of the speakers was actually telling the truth. I did not get to comment to all the bill. I only said we are at K S D and O R Tamba. I didn't mention that we have managers and leaders. As members, we are aware that our government has. Three spheres of government. Has three spheres of government. We came to you as municipalities. Traditional leaders were also invited. In fact, Njekbandi Chilo, all interested groups and individuals have come to porto Ayu Apo. Bonke Abantu, Bonakali, Ndeokbana Banom, Mchawe invited. See, I quit again Kuku, welcome Honorable Speaker and your leadership. Welcome councillors either from K S D or O R Tamba. And the leaders that were supposed to be here. As we proceed by the show of hands, if you want to raise your concerns, we will start from the first row at the back. The last row, I beg your pardon. Number three. Number four. Number five. Number six. Number six, number seven. And Zautada ten, number eight. I will take ten. Number nine in front here. Papelil. Number ten. Number one, you may proceed. Greetings to the members of the Honorable House. And all the participants here today. My name is Dumisani Tabat. I'm representing E F F. Here to present our submission, oral submission. To the Independent Demarcation Board Bill of twenty twenty two. Chairperson, the demarcation of wards and municipal councils is crucial for the sustenance of democracy in the country. Section one fifty five, three of the constitution requires that an institution dealing with demarcation issues must be completely independent so as to not to allow narrow political interests to influence decisions on, on demarcations. Section one fifty five of the constitution. Requires that an institution dealing with demarcation issues. Must be completely independent. So as to not to allow narrow political interest to influence. Decision on demarcation. We are broadly in support of an independent authority. Tasked with this function. Our contribution here is to ensure that there are no loopholes in the bill. That will endanger the independence of the Independent Demarcation Board. Clause then outlines the process for the appointment of the selection. Of the board. We submit that this process must be handled by Parliament. And not only left to a selection panel that is appointed by the minister. For a more open and accountable process. Parliament is the most suitable institution to conduct the selection process. For the appointment of the board members. Not a selection panel appointed by the minister. Clause twenty five of this bill provides that the board can only make a determination on whether. Or not a municipality ought to be categorized as a section A. Category A municipality, beg your pardon. After consultation with the M E C and the minister. This leaves such important decisions, issues on political, on politicians. We want to argue that there must be a preliminary requirement for consultation. With civil society and community structures. Before a decision of this nature is made. For the determination of the status of a municipality. The bill provides that when a determination is made. As to what a category municipality falls. That determination can be revisited only after ten years. This is too long a period. And instead of including the numbers of years. Board ought to be empowered to revise the status of a municipality. Based on a number of verifiable factors. Including key performance indicators. For certain categories of municipality. On clause twenty seven. Which makes provisions for consultation for determination. Of municipal boundaries. We submit that there be provisions for oral engagement and submission. By members of the community. Limiting the form of submission to merely written forms may exclude a large number of our people. Large number of our people. Clause thirty five of the bill must not only consider. The number of voters per ward. The number of? Voters. Particularly in the concept of rural areas. Where the population is sparse. Clamping villages that are far apart from each other into simple wards hinders representation. The E F F support the rest of the provision of. Number two. Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Vuyisa Malangeni. The C D W. Mine is very short. I want to appeal to the board. That when it considers. Especially when it comes to the areas of traditional rural communities. Municipal credit to witness. Existing municipalities, their council members and staff. Those considerations. I want to believe and hope that they, they will not supersede and dominate the interest, the interests and the views and the plight of the general communities that are suffering as a result of the current setting of their situation. Jemba Ndisiti Ndisuka Etoha. I am saying I am from. When I, when I move. To municipality, going to Dujua. When I go to Dujua, I take Vigesville. It is seventy kilometers from Vigesville. But from Tata to Vigesville, it's ten kilometers. I want to leave it at that, Engos. Number three. Thank you, Chairperson. I greeting the board members. Officials in this place. All the drifters in the house. I am from ward thirty five. From Abatemunation. Unfortunately, I do not see King Zolibanzi around here. It's just a few things I'm here to raise. Firstly, I must appreciate the document. Kuba, the first thing that I want to raise is.
Tausons was admitted men.
I would love for you as the committee to come straight directly to the communities. And niba banda kanyi abantu. As much as you can. I am raising this because.
Abantu, by the time to akufika it democracy, abesawudafika. Kuyegwatiwa abazakunigensu sinjoo, safakwa songe shlome. Koto abantu today basali nde yisindro, be tente swengazo.
This is because when we were reaching democracy, people were promised that they will get houses, but till this day. When you are drawing up these bills. Please educate the people extensively about what it is that is being said. Our people are not educated. I must say this. This demarcation is very, it is assisting at home. But when you do this, please involve chiftens and traditional leaders. I am saying this because. There are facing back home in our villages, there's the council at this side and then there's the traditional leader this side. Now, this becomes a problem when it comes to land issues because now there's the councilor and then there's the traditional leaders. This is why I had said people must be educated about this so that they know how to differentiate. Our people are very poor, especially in this area. Because our people do not have much information about this, when I see comes to our villages, now they're being bashed about these amendments that they're making, do not have full information on it. When you do amendments, Chairperson. Please. Send municipalities or send a delegation directly straight to these places. We now have a problem, Mtata is not developed. People now take land into their own hands because there is no directory from the municipalities on how this land should be occupied. The demarcation issue. Reiterate what this, but the independent. So reiterate this so that it does not come back to bite you Mamusokutu because we'll always be pointing at you.
Number four.
Greetings to you, Chairperson. The reason why I started allocation. My name is Mbongeni Dalisigo from Mtata. On the issue of demarcation board, let me express my gratitude. Us raising our opinions will add a great contribution. Prior we had issues. Looking at the kings in power and the bill of the demarcation, you'll see that there is a great division. The land of Abatembo Nation or Zwelibanzi. Is divided into two or three. For example, in KSD. It goes through the municipality of KSD. You'll find that because of this, the treatment is not the same. This cause great loss when it comes to progress. As we are from the rural areas. The great issue that you are facing. You'll find developed areas issuing out bills. Demarcation will bring them together with those who will not benefit. This will cause great division as a many amount of things on what this bill is all about. This will seem like the government in power is not bringing clarity to its people and is not progressive. People will end up fighting because there's no clarity on the development. Please kindly consider. Please do consider, especially if you visit areas where you'll find that there are kings. This will make great progress, especially looking at the people in that area and counting how many people we have in each community. We do support the bill and as KSD, we are waiting on the matter. Thank you, Chairperson.
Number five.
Monday, 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 say, entli ni, Ingus eskoyo.
Greetings to the House at large and all the kings present. And the committee from the parliament. I'm grateful for the opportunity that we are given so that we can voice out our concerns regarding the bill. I am Tabi Sokoyane from Poston Jones, Ward 6. I am sent by Sir Johnis Woods Forum. We are grateful that whenever there are proposed bills, people are called so that they can take part in decision processes. Just recently, there was an error where we were informed that there was a certain man who was saying, who was claiming rather, that there should be a bill proposed.
Now.
We trust that this will come to an end as we are having this proposed bill. Because it's the people that should be brought in front so that they can make decisions for their future. Kujalonje siyamemele ndiyo kubana nazo i councilor zingalalinde skutatu isbibo, gento zabantu. We are here to speak about the proposed bill.
And that, the understanding here to see Sir Johnis Woods Forum is that
Jengo kubasisuke Poston Jones, Ika Mel Kokela, Iokaanya, the name that seems to be leading, Ika Ma Eliti Independent, Ozimeleyo.
Apa, with demarcation board.
On the demarcation board.
And the assumption here is that if board is also influenced by the politics, now about, now about says open a umbutu.
Our assumption is that the demarcation board should not be influenced by any politics. Even though that we are aware that, I mean, these boards are from the parliament, they should all use the name Independent, Ozimeleyo. They should not allow any influences from outside. As the Sir Johnis Wood Board, we do support the bill, however, its power should lie on communities. And that. And that kunga biko pika pikano, they should, as the parliament, you should address in the bazoguta bandu balala. And that you as politicians, you must not use that to your advantage and then we as community members, we are left hungry. We do support the bill.
Number six.
Greetings. My name is Wezile. Tisuka Mshonto. I am from Mshonto. Firstly. I came here to the demarcation board? But because I am here, I will still say what I wanted to say to the demarcation board even though it is the parliament that is here. This is not sitting well with us, the matter that things that were, are needing to be considered are not. Ngokomzegele. For an example. I stay at Ngambele. Ukuza apake SD is 17 kilometers. It is seven, the distance is 17 kilometers to here. I then move from here to Zolo. Which is 40 kilometers. That is 40 kilometers. That is the closest town, which is not the capital town. When I go to Gumbu, eyo yo na dolobi sejen swango Mshonto. It costs further. I will not talk about Umasbalumba, Klawase KSD. But this is where we want to talk about. I want to say this. This has to do with the 10 years. Oh, before ndifika glendo yonmiyagalishumi. Before I talk about that. Previously, we were in KSD. And we wrote letters to demarcation board. That did not agree with us moving to Mshonto. Koto le body with isindasibekile yongapambili, they did not consider us. I do not trust the demarcation board. Maybe it is because this is not given a realization. Let us go to the 10 years. I want us to say. Because this will be, this will assist in the participation of people. But all the things that the demarcation board said they will take, they will consider, they must take consideration of. I won't be longer, thank you.
Number seven.
Greetings to parliament. My name is Lungistanis Pawana.
Tisuka paya Nyandini.
I am from Nyandini. I represent Sankoa, I lead Sankoa. Okay.
Kula ward yaka twenty one.
From ward twenty one?
Eh, di send vuya.
I, I came here ecstatic.
Da kondu bage andisuna te tindfana na loputo suga.
And I told myself that I will come in front and voice my views and opinions.
Si nengaga esmi si eh si sbagile yu pokwa demarcation board.
We are, we are faced with many challenges that we have told them about the demarcation board.
Si satele na lapa ngubasinetemba lobani kwangloti demarcation board.
It is necessary for us to talk about these challenges we are facing.
Eh jengu basigula maspala wa paya Nyandini.
As the Nyandini municipality?
Di funa apa ubeni omfanikeso ngundu inu umtu osuka ngaa pesa nsechwa.
I want, I want you as the members to draw yourself a picture in the mind.
Oza oktata i transportez nta atupamukubafa fika maspala kotoa kotoa nglokal government.
One has to take three cars of transport to get to where they want to go.
Uitata uksuke ndaweni yake eyo fika tulupi ne ngeleni.
You are from your house to ngeleni?
Asu ke ngeleni iza pemtata.
From ngeleni to yemtata?
Asuka pemtata libode maspala wa.
From tata to libode their municipality.
So si ibona la nto inga tipkuetekeka kulupa ku demarcation board, kusobolo ba, asi kontina muba inoba isengu local government, indo yezabane distance eh over hundred kilometers.
We do not see this as the demarcation board that has to travel more than a hundred kilometers.
Eh, kutalaga si tet, kunja nje si teteno demarcation board, kubonaga loba, uyakhala uke asenzelele nyoba yokuwa akabuisa le umaspala wasenzele.
We have been raising this issue with the demarcation board.
Kutalasi icho, kunja nje ke siya bono ba, di, di ne kala ngoku.
I am very much worried.
Kaku tetwangue ten years, kotoa mpinne didino, indo yee tetwa yoyo ndokutwiza kwenseka, definitely, sisa wu nekwa nechansi.
I am very much worried about the ten years, but I am keeping in mind that for now, you are still saying this, not implementing it.
Di vuya kakulu kwa isa abane ten years, paga telendo, kosi itkuetekeka kakulu ndiwa ku demarcation board, kusobolo ba, kulemija uyufuma loba, kualapemzi inidisa kwenzu umzage longo umzi olapeli bote.
I will make a quick example for you with a house that is in libode.
Kutoa kusema ubeni paya Kula Lali.
The village is called Emma Obeni.
Paya uzafuma loba kukona umzi otandwe kwa i yati le.
There is a house that is, the yard is being divided.
Elinyika alaligo ward three.
The other side of this family or house is in ward three.
Elinyika alaligo ward one.
And the other one is in ward one, but it is the same family home.
Ikutueleleke no ndubano, eh si sintonisipalaayo, kani hamba wepa nona sinyane sanga ngampu.
And then, that tells you that all these things that you write, they are not honest.
So kanditeleleke kaku kandwa umzi no kubeka pelali.
Tell me that now, when you divide this one home, what does that say about the whole village?
Eh, si, siya tayala kakulu, eh si sinto siyasitabane sango tlobolo ba.
These things are dividing us.
Jengu ba ku usivana ngoku kutetwa.
As you hear people's concerns?
Kusituwa kufunu kwenzua u, 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 u category A, apa K S D.
About category A in K S D?
Paya Nyandiniyasitabasele kwa bonaga basilito.
In Nyandini, these things affect us badly.
Si palileke na lapo singanda ngubaloko buva kaku tlekutwa lomshaba.
We have written a letter.
Go wenyikumkan.
Because we have heard that the land is belonging to another chief person.
Na noni unanda, unanda, uni ususa kwenyikumkan, ni usa kweni ayonga banon.
And now there is divisions between the chief persons.
Omshaba kantlo vyeso taoza oktata uzi swakulo nomshaba kantlo.
Nlo vyeso esland, when you take nlo vyeso esland to another person.
Si palileke zabuya ne si sinto si shoba si fumisini fumene indwe paluwayo, sune reference.
We did get the response that you have received our letter.
Singanda ke lendo ba asi kade elitina u involva, kui, 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 kui lendoza le, inmetro le, konagona snanga kine metro.
We, we are not saying do not put the municipality under metro.
I K S D we are ifuni metro nga ifumana, but not in cases of ward.
If K S D wants to be under a metro, that may happen, but not under our wards.
So si kulonda, oke, and funikuanda kakulu, uku ba, ni funuku ubani ni fumane kwa wanelelo lendo, seni stembis, nduban seni sa wu yakwensa ndahozi.
So if you want, if you want more information about this, as already you have said that you will come to our communities, we will welcome you.
Monday bolese, shado.
Thank you Chairperson, greetings.
This bolesele kunkokele zonge eskoyo.
Greetings to the leaders in the house.
Otetayongo Pumzilemsacho.
I am Pumzilemsacho.
Si kalinzolo, masimne gituba nai.
Otetayongo Pumzilemsacho.
My name is Pumzilemsacho.
Di suga kula mshaba wase tchochanga mabomva negela.
From Tchochi, we are called Amabomvan.
Ayeye kritega mabomvanazokreti azofike mkanduli ndinglumtu.
They exceed two mkanduli, I am one of them.
Ngokwalendo inemi da, ndifanalba mnandi zavasemonti ngomso.
About this demarcation, I will be in East London tomorrow.
Kotoa ke ngayenleke ondi bonewa manditweke ndizo kabela pa K S D.
Because of the cost, I thought I should come here in K S D.
Ukuzo apa K S D hundred and twenty, ubunaga na.
The cost a hundred and twenty rand to K S D.
Kotoa kubeka emonti tlan ndisufuma nale document, kwinne anipatale five hundred and fifty rand.
But I must pay five hundred and ninety rand to get this document from East London.
Ke ngayeva sisi sa tuke shalo, nditelo ndifumela nditshala nditet.
Because of that reason, Chairperson, please allow me to raise my concern.
Uba, ndi kokele i kumhulo luchala mabomvan.
Because I am a leader of the youth of Amabomvan.
Monday ngai fishike inyaniso epellele oba ndikwangu yeno treba.
I will tell you the truth that I am a councillor as well.
Kotoa ke ngayoba ndiboneoba, ngokwesenda na ndinazo da ofike emonti koto abanduanwa kokele aba ofika bona.
But because I looked at the cost and thought to myself, I will make it to East London, but the people I am representing will not make it.
So for such reason, please allow me to proceed.
Ngezo ziza tu ndivomelinin nditi?
Eh, longulu ndiyawamkeela.
I ac, I accept this document, Chairperson?
Ndiza obelegisa ke ngeliti.
And will add on and say?
Please, uzunzele u demarcation, kaisi sa aze, abashonipe abantu, abapetwe zinkosi, abanen kokele eskoyo panzi wenkos.
Please tell the demarcation to respect the people that are being led by the traditional leaders.
Uba, nditetan ndinendu ngu yobanga bana, bekenda se K S D ngapambile kwa sa, ndise Amatoli ndinga zubaba ndio fika kantla.
I was in K S D before and I ended up in, in Amatlati.
Kotoa intungu, eyeyo banga bana yonke lo minyaka inga pokwa mashumama bini, i cost zopeka quit district yea five hundred runs, seni kawa bantu ba.
What hurts most that these costs are on people who are poor?
As I speak.
Jengo, kuba nditeta?
Usuke slambi nutro slangu ndisengemtata.
Ukusu, jengo kuba nditeta, the cost of my jacket to the shoe, I bought them in mtaata.
Uba, oba ndikenda ya emonti, asu ku mislamba neski ba.
Because if I go to East London, I will not afford the jacket and the t-shirt.
Please, demarcation.
Ndiakrela kuni.
Yani kula committee isauza guti.
Go to the committee that will come back to us as the communities.
Ni kaleluba singe, singabe mi basen zanzafrika si tivushoni chuan ku freedom charter yetu.
And tell them that according to this freedom charter, we are South African citizens and we demand respect.
Monday kuwebelise ke ngeliti.
Lastly.
Siya ifuna inmetro yoka la etranscire.
We do want umaspala omba kwa okoka la estranscire.
Uba, nati sisi si, sisi si zue esfanalbe zini.
Because we are also a nation like any other nations.
Kalono utima bolele ngamo shanka shana.
Thank you.
Eh, utolo njema mapamwako, utolo mama, siya tayala noko, masinika ne mbeko, ne ndaba ne ngolo noko, ragumbesi steti besa mapamla.
May, may we all please respect this session, we are now hearing people are making noises, let us please respect this.
Uba mama.
Monday bolese kumshala ngapambi.
Greetings Chairperson.
Di bolese, kosomlong.
Greetings to the speakers.
Baba maspala Bambobabi.
Of the municipalities.
Yethamsa ngazimpokoto.
Two municipalities, those are warrior women.
Di bolese kumalungwe parliament.
I greet the members of parliament.
Na kuingosi zezwele tu.
And to the chiefs in our full nation.
Na be fundi si abanitanda zela yo, okuama ni be, ni sachele shalwin.
I also, I also greet the reverends that have prayed for you to be sitting up there in parliament.
Ne councillors.
Ngokunjalono treba.
Di vuya kakulu, tatumkwaati.
I am very happy.
Di siti, jebanda kutuma, uzuzi si metro apa, kuba sendi five to grave, zegutu ndifele metro.
I am very happy to you kwaati digela, because I have put you up there.
But bektume Chrisan, wabesa okalewa tunua.
They sent you to Chrisan, but you were sent here first.
Di funa ugot.
I want to say this.
Kuni malungu achonge ne ne demarcation.
To you, the members that are appointed for the demarcation?
Ni zinkosi zavasebenzi de demarcation.
You are the chiefs of the people who work for the demarcation board.
Ababantu aboi kugu yichindogo ba.
No, we didn't come to your land, we have just looking up with a plane.
Ababantu, these people ke bayachindogo ba tinasukoi kugu zaapa, kotoa ke banchongolishobola mangesi, kenange toni yamangesi kabecho yu ba, tinanjasi babilesa zaapa.
Umzage lo pilayo, one of i members of the demarcation board, eya lalapeholden in.
One of.
Wafuneki zapetownwall.
One of the members?
Zangwa zukuzetownwall, sa yo itatapek.
One of the members who was supposed to come here, they could not, they could not, they got lost.
Kasibuzwa emda ungalalera njanugle tulupi.
We asked how can you get lost in this small town?
Watayinabedichonge, M P.
And the answer was, no, I was looking at the map and G P S because I flew.
Umzage lo pilayo kwaati.
For an ex, for an example.
Apa M V S, uko councillor onguwa semvizo, owele lumpasha, pamkogokba, ay M V S.
There is a councillor from Basha?
Di funuku vage, kuko umromuad committee pa wawot for apa K S D, ota ngut, oh ay lamana, ayakwale. Yikinge, iwa.
Kalo mama.
Iwa.
Kalo mama, pa uzaza san.
Oh, hey, ndikumaliya si. You did not introduce yourself? Do you not know me?
Oh, di libel.
I forgot.
Ndengumfundis.
I am Reverend?
Bishop and evangelist Pope.
Bishop and evangelist Pope?
Nomtu.
Nomtu?
Lengane.
Lengane. Is shado sesa koma.
Ndengumfunsu lengane.
I am Reverend Lengane.
Enenekelukolo, bingesonchongo samunga.
Please accept my apologies for not introducing myself.
And from beyond us.
But because I voted for you, I assume you know me.
Uya ibona ke lendo kubakuke kutu yuwaad committees yoti baninda wene.
Do you see when they say what committees meet one place?
Yuwaad committee ya seseteb.
What, what committee?
Ta kufira nganikemkiyonge ne M V S.
It goes to.
Uba iyamana kmalini.
Who does it go with?
Uwelumpasha, uyakanada.
You cross M Basha when you go to M V S?
It demarcation.
The demarcation.
Taino kende, isenzele ingeba, yokuze bantuini, nipatalele, because nipatale.
The demarcation must.
Ilale, abesu ote. If you get seniti ndipega, diyo jonga, what for?
Because you are being paid for.
Meganjana. Umjonge, ndiroba kaisa usuka, what for, aweliswe, aswe kwenye indawenga pesheye. Anamsa beno kibana nilali.
I have no, I have no problem with the villages.
Yonando yingena uzinshupi and, and kapas.
I do not worry about that.
Uba, ababantu.
Because those people.
There was, is pick up a besetangenge ngeliso in equis.
Le kuko umtu abetetangenge.
Equis, umdia nasengangeliso.
Equis falls under ingangeliswe.
Yachisbegona kwa kabashali, abarrentingangeliso.
For them to have equis, there were people who were renting.
Ok, maspala, maspala, okanukulmente, or forums.
Municipality build four room houses.
Di languti, emdo not tetangue equis, didwa mka ngofaifromsme.
I say.
Then ba obe eskolwe ndisengangeliswe, first today, besa kiwa ge, ge pa, ge pa panels.
I tell.
Akondu mshugo kweapa because, inshupi koi, umtuwa se equis, ya fana wosengangeliso.
The challenges, challenges of people from equis are the same.
Now, umtuwa sengang, wase equis, kenkosoite, wanitik epogotuin.
People from ngangeliswe.
Umtuwa sengangeliso.
Must welcome those.
Ulapapumako.
Because that is where they are from.
Ndi ayamkeela le bill.
I adopt, adopt the bill and accept it?
Insha.
It.
Apa kaucho ngile.
When you look at it?
Five years enenene yee demarcation in.
Five years for demarcation is very small.
Uba kaku kutwa, i izindo eh zaguenzwa I T P, ifiki five years ngega taan.
Because when they dishow.
Okanya ngega taichwa, i affect take eh indawo, it demarcation. Okwasta tukenoko kabelan.
Thirdly and lastly.
Di kima ileline yamblenza vtetangai, kwa ucho ngaye umtuwa se Tochana, apa pesheya umlamba.
When you look at people from Tochana?
Ebu telu.
When they face death?
Engraziye na, umtuwa kentla mebelela pespelele mtaata.
Not knowing that their person.
Akayas ndiroba funeka ayeyelibote, okanya ngalen, because esa ndaho zombie, enye ngalen, enye ilibote.
They do not know.
Ufuneka yuwaumafes ogwezondawo.
They do not know that they should visit.
Akayasiza apa kuka councillors, kuka councillors alap, kutoa squazi kuknaita because upilonga, Nyandini nuspalit.
And then they do not get assistance.
Yechonge londu ya zombie uyalila, upuchayo. Okanya utonelwe lika zapetbankin, because agana bankelibote, akakuazi kuyoku pimali le yoku kotoa because agana maspala ulapaglenda. Kanienze nibuyombo, nibachonge ababantu, gabantu biitu aba, gabantu bagatiko aba, sibapete kaku sumu, kandiza utimuna, hamba umtuwa bantu beke elibote, anganyitakali.
Please consider the challenges that people are facing, these are our people, these are God's people, please take this into consideration.
Inmetro ke kwaati, dakpindi sangodwendi fo, obuwa ni.
We want the metro.
Oh, embassy kakulu.
Eh, number ten.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Eh, ika malam, umsutuka azimango.
My name is umsutuka azimango.
Tsusuka kwa ward two ingangeliswe.
I'm from ward two in ngangeliswe.
Di pinde, ndibengo councillor, apa ku council ya se K S D municipality.
Di pinne ndibengo treba, quit K S D municipality.
Monday bolese kundendese tu esibalulekleyo, esesuka yee parliament siya zebuka.
Greetings to our members of the parliament.
Eh, di bolese na quit councillors, esesuka yee O R Tambo.
Greetings to all treba, abasuka yee O R Tambo and K S D, all protocol observed.
Zau reflecta ke in twofolds.
I will reflect in twofolds.
Eh, personally as a mshali.
Jengo mshali as a community member.
Di city, ndiyay supporter i bill.
Di city, I am supporting the bill.
Di pinde ke ngoku ndi reflecte.
I will also make reflections.
As Chairperson we M P committee, apa A K K S D municipality.
Jengo slalo we M P.
Apa what we have just noted.
Indo tesa ikapela.
Kula part four we bill.
Gu part four of the bill?
Uba legeka kakulu.
It's very important.
Zinga shoba i bill yo na aybale kanga.
Without saying that the bill is not important.
Aybaleke yonke.
It's important.
U part four simnote because uteta.
We have noted part four because of the demarcation.
It delimi, eh, elimination, and bonaga, it limitation, isitapase la kakulu singa bashali ni council.
Utebi soliskapazela kakulu singo utekiswa kusitapazela kakulu si council.
Sa tige tinasiza ambasyo recommenda pa kula committee in the section seventy-nine.
We decided that sisa umnakeza kalokispa kamiso ku section nine.
Section seventy-nine.
Section seventy-nine.
Public eh participation committee.
Public participation committee.
Apo sisa uti na committee.
Where we are going to say the committee.
Si akte misa indogoba.
We do advise.
My conduct of civic education.
Must conduct civic education.
On it demarcation processes at large.
On uku it demarcation processes at, at large.
Oba imego esinizi esitapazela we apa.
Because issues stated here.
Zimego esetanget limitation.
Are issues affecting demarcation.
Ufumanse ba nanngumse kelo mshusenzwa nganga ngeliswe ne quesi.
As we have heard the examples of quesi and ngeliswe.
Part of inganga ngeliswe ifola guenyuwa.
Inganga ngeliswe ipanti guenyewa.
Part of i, i quesi ifole guenyewa.
Ufumanisba i quesi ona ipanti guenyewa.
Tande kabelisa ge.
As I'm going to conclude.
Esivusiza obesi bekuanga bantu ngoke demarcation ne limitation.
Izimboza banda basitapazela yo kumba woku tandoa kwemita.
Ze zitasi trebisasisi tuklas civic education.
Ze si esisi tukasi trebisakui kukis fundo.
Siza kufundisa bantu indoba ina treba ya bo ibalu leke kanga kananina.
They are going to teach community members on how important their participation is.
Utwe kengo keza zimboza bo i green paper.
Kutweke izimboza bo i green paper.
Zi ambese yoklinwa kutwe i white paper.
They are going to be cleaned and named, uh, white paper i pepe limshope.
White paper zi ekui bill.
From i white paper which is i pepe limshope, to i bill umteto oyilwayo.
Bill zi ekui act.
From the bill, it's going to be an act.
Ibe kengo.
Umteto.
Treba ya bantu ibikalepa ku krasus.
This shows that the participation, the participation rather of the community members started from the ground.
Di akabelisa ge nditete amelwa echonge pansa kuba besinamduwe.
As I'm going to conclude, I'm gonna be looking down my eyes.
Metro si chonge ngamishabu ova pe KSD.
We are looking at metro.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eh, number eleven.
Maa ndibuli se mshala ngapambili.
Greetings, Chairperson.
Buli se kui councillors.
Greetings to all treba.
Ndi buli se kubandibonke balape kinsavacha dalenge.
Greetings to the house at large.
Ndi ngufiki Lesobale.
My name is Fiki Lesobale.
Ndisuka kawa ward nine, ape KSD.
I am from ward nine at KSD.
Ndina ukenomzi opaya enyandin.
I have a house in Yandini.
Paya kawa ward eleven.
At ward eleven.
Di lapake ukuzo tikuitema ka shinboard.
I'm here to say to the board.
Di accepta le bill.
Di ayamkeela umteto iyilwayo.
This is utika nanjalo.
I will also add to say.
Ngenzi wa imisteke indogoba, abantu abapuwa na barich, bakalulwe.
Everyone should be treated equa, equally, rich and poor.
Kunga chongwalali na logish.
There should be no specification on a township or rural area.
If it demarcation nyaba banda kanya ibafa gebonge ngapagati.
The demarcation should include everyone.
Pa wesbi ni.
Secondly.
Kukona imilambo esunayo welkalalitu ne se trans sky.
We have rivers in the trans sky.
Inga se, inga chongwa, mshenge ta indawe temeka, demarcation, awanipawndar.
We wish inga chongelwa pansi inga timshlaombe ipawndar.
If mshambi kunelali kuelatana, ne lap, lap welkala ma zibanda kame if ikona long.
The rural areas should not be separated.
This is outige ngoku.
I will order to say.
Ukona uwa ten enyandini.
There's ward ten enyandeni.
Ward eleven.
Ward eleven.
Ward twelve.
In ward twelve.
Zonge zonda wo zigfu shan mtat.
All these areas are closer to umtata.
Umdo suka umzegalo kawa ward eleven, before ay enyandini funege zokale terupin mtat.
It said that someone coming from ward eleven should start here in umtata town.
Si akale kutzonke ezo wa.
We appeal that all these wards.
Masondezwe mtat.
Must be brought closer to umtata.
Galoloke elo si ikasa kutmaibeko ni metro KSD.
With everything that I've said, we do accept and acknowledge the bill.
Eh, so kibile kelo mchigelo.
We have finished this round.
I change kengo ku sautata banda by fifteen, koti misuzu, isa kwehla ibe mitatu, kenga yaba bafike late.
We are going to take abantu abanga mashumi aneslanu, the difference on this round is we are going to limit the minute to three.
Ya kala ge u number one, eh, number two, number three, number four, number five, number six, number seven, lo une pepe limshope. Eh, number eight oneches limshope, number nine lo nezantes, mvagwalu oneches limshope, number nine, ito bekalu okta ni komba le mshega, number nine, yes, number ten. Or number eleven, number twelve kwa konneso sandasigema. We no chigelesayo, sadiukbali lungu number twelve. Ungu number thirteen iyapa elani. Eyes sanu ulu angesutulo.
Please, no fighting.
This is na banda wa tatu abashota utu mo kwelela kelo mchigelo.
This is, this means that this is the last round.
Number thirteen. This is na banda babi nabashota yo, number fourteen.
Two people remaining.
Number fourteen, chega. Number fifteen, ninka ayage, number one.
Eh, sitalo andisazu yakuitoze protocols ngoku.
Chairperson, andisuzonge na nzu lukuisincho kuimiba ye protocol.
Ndi ngunkosi uvulinjela kamtichwa.
I am kosi vulinjela mtichwa.
Ndi zaapa kuba, ndifumeni, okogba namchange kuza be kushonyulu angabantu, balengi ndi ngokuza gueni parliamente, kule bill.
I came here so that I can also hear people's views and also voice my own opinion on the proposed bill.
Si akapelage indogoba i billi, yenzi wa kuba ibinge kwa umteto, oni kanga kasana isikokele, kule ndo kutwa it demarcation board.
We have, we have taken great notice that the reason why we have this bill, it's because there was no proposed bill that was sticking to exactly on the demarcation.
Itcho apa lendo iti.
It is stated here.
Isizatu.
The reason.
Sokogoba sibeslapa namchange.
That we are here today.
Kukole bill. Is to provide for the establishment, functions and powers of the independent municipal demarcation authority.
Kukinsekisindokbana kukona the independent authority.
To provide for the criteria and procedures for the determination and determination of municipal boundaries.
Kukinigeza kananjalo inwa lasela kuimiba echonge ne nezidoska maspala.
To provide for the determination of whites.
Kukinsekisindokbana nazo i words isiyabanda kanyeka.
To provide for the establishment of the demarcation appeals authority.
No kini seka kananjalo indokbana ukutandwa kwemita, we afumaniseka kurogo umteto oyilwayo.
To provide for the municipal capacity assessment.
Kananjalo i assessment kamaspala.
And to provide for the matters incidental thereto.
Kananjalo no unigeza ina ilokuinoba kakaka esinga chindokbana uluntulu chonge ne ne nazo.
Si tingeke indogoba sibubukosi si mampile lot.
Our view as the chief and see, we do take regard on that.
Anike zelingo ku zo otangoku chanda imita.
You are not here to speak about the demarcation of the bill.
Ni zele indogoba na si isikokele, esakuneta, tasume kutakanoa, kuchandwa imita, ekuitesha elisai.
You are here to propose this bill so that when the time comes, so that this bill is amended, you'll be able to provide solutions.
Longo ke isneta kakulu kuba kukuiskokele, kuzanywa indogoba, ma kube kuiskokele ngoku.
This will add a great contribution especially to us as the traditional leaders so that we do have a way forward.
Kungabi kwe skokele guenzumbota.
When we do not have a way forward, we will have division.
Ngenaye indogoba ngokuza be kukuiskokele, kuzaba kuintela, zokogoba kube kulande leluano, lezinto kakulse.
Because now we have a way forward and the act, it will greatly lead us so that everything will go well.
Longteto uza ukwaka, iziseko, esiza ukwa zindogoba, tasume kutetwa, ngokogoba kutakanywe, kuchandwe, imita, sikwa zindogoba, sikoto.
This act will greatly add contribution on structures and improvements.
Longo ke sia ibule.
We greatly show appreciation and gratitude on that.
Si ayfunaki indogoba, is it uku bangalo longteto pasesiwe.
Should this bill be amended and passed?
Lendu bitetwa lela nenekasi payaku part four ikona seloka kulu.
What the lady said on part four, it should be greatly considered.
Awareness campaign and education of people, ngokanduva abafaneli indogoba balutate, nonuasi, abafaneli baba benalu, konukuze batati sikitimo, esisiso, ngesinto esitapazela bona, takuchandwa le imita.
Ukutoki swanga kumbi, uluntu, ukuzi ba fundiswe, so that they can have clarity and information on what this bill is about, so that when it comes to decision-making processes, they are also pleased.
Natike sibubukosi, sisa ukotakenge lo tayesha.
Also as traditional leaders, we will also have our own discussion.
Si temi isengezinto esitapazela, imishaba ye kumka.
Advice on matters concerning land of kingships.
Si tanku isenge imishaba ekapazela, eh, eh, igengezinto esitapazela, imishaba ekokele zinkosi.
We will also give a clarification on matters of lands that are led by the kings.
Si take into context, indoyo pulhisola bantu, nonka dikunchalo.
Si tatele inolelo indo emele i kupulisso the develop, the development of our communities.
Oba yenzi wale billi, eyo nanjongo yokeba, ma kupuliswe abantu beliswe, longsansafrika ngo kulingana, ngo kufanan.
The main objective of the bill is to develop communities so that we can all live equally.
As nan nga kenga le billi, only if, kuzanyanise kwa zinkokele, esiza kubekenge ngoku, zesebe zisa le bill, to put it into effect.
We do not have any problem with the bill as long as it will be led in honesty so that it will be put in effect.
Sibubukosi, we don't have a problem with this bill, sakungena ngela tayesha len ngoku, okwa ngoku, imitimbiye metro, nenjoni nijoni ekapazela imishaba yetu, ekungateka tetwa na yo, ngayo natisinkosi, sakui bona ngela oktesha, ewi metro si asfuna, kotwa masi consultwe, sibubukosi, kunga trinelu anje metro, kuba kuko individuals, esitindowa sa benefita, ngokoba de metro, i metro as a metro without contributing to the improvement of the quality of life of the people is not a metro, diabule.
Eyo nanjongo amantla kukubasi za ikasa i bill, kwaye kenengoba kakakes corner, we will cross the bridge when we get there, noba kungana kutini si ikasa umteto oyilwayo inkosi.
Eh, inkosi kakulu, manda tati tuvalu manda buli se kumalungwe parliamente ngoku kila ngoslal.
Let me take this opportunity and greet Chairperson and the Parliament Committee.
Eh, ikamalam, ndanguazitapa.
My name is Danogazitapa.
The speaker of OR Tambo Municipality.
Umso mlo mowe OR Tambo Municipality.
Eh, one za ukalange complaint.
Za ukalange skalazo.
We want people to participate with programs, ganga ngoku.
Si ayfuni indokba abantu batatinga treba kwezingu.
But we have received an invite on the twentieth of June, expecting people to be here on the twenty-third.
Kotwa si asafumana isme monge twenteka June, kwa be ngyanzeleke indokbana abantu babe lapanga longshawa namchange.
Si akela improvement on that.
Si akela ke indokbana malungwe parliamente asoli samesho kule ndo.
Okwesbi ni, kuba luleki luba bantu sba consult, ganga ngoku, as government.
As government, it's very important that we consult the people.
But ukuba pokolela apa KSD, eh, kule nda usku yongoku, yenza abanyabantu bangabi, banaa yu opportunity obaba participate, kule kulu tato na treba, noku consult okwa apa.
But then if we do this in last minute, it means that others will be left behind.
So si ak, si akila, we do understand the financial constraints of the parliament, but we request improvement in terms of the public participation, public participation and consultation of abantu sba kokele.
Si ekonda imego yokto tobala godko kosho, eh, parliamente, kotwa si akeli indokbana le requesting yenza yo i jongwe ngamishabu.
Okwesbi ni, ganza utetaki bill, we accept the bill.
Si ayamkeela, si ayomkeela umteto iyilwayo.
We accept the proposals.
Kwaye si ayamkeela nez, nez pakamiswe sitezapakanyiswa.
Especially the ten-year period that talks to i consult, i, i period yo review, i, i determination of words and boundaries.
Inga kumbilomba woba uza utata aminyakeli shumi.
Because it does create a problem for us as municipalities, le yoku chincha chincha i, i, i boundaries every five years.
The changing of boundaries, uzisa kukritwa, kritwaana, ne mikeli mgeni kuti indigo maspala.
Kuba uti i, i portion etile, okanya ifuleje etile, so yenzi le service deliver, ichinje isiwakuenye iwa, ifienzele ina kenge ngoku longu.
Imikeli mgeni sitesi jamela lena yo, ufumanisindokbana kutakeke pagati, abanyekwezingewa, kunenkonzo esisilela yo.
Oba, if it was our own decision, we would request twenty years, but we accept the ten years, we would request twenty years, so that it brings stability in our municipalities, but let's take the ten years and see what happens, then if there's an opportunity to review, then we'll review, but for now, we accept the ten years.
Obanga bamshambe be kutwa ezitwe bozitakia twa siti, tinabesi za ukale indokbana kube sitate iminyakeli shumi, korwa ge sia ayamkeela, na, na le minyaka ni be kilayo eli shumi.
At the same time, we accept the, the requirements, zokoba, when do you do it limitation, ne ip criteria o i jongal, but we do request, ukubamake i jongwe, le one-size-fits-all approach.
Si akela kananjalo, ngenogo nitena daguna, kulo eli pepe, si akela kananjali, indokbana ni kwa lasele, ne one-size-fits-all, indo etike, esinomze zikoyo, zibanda kanyati naso.
Because it dens, it population ya se kautengi, net density ayo cannot be the same, net density population ya se warcham, can never be the same.
Asichonga uluntu, ulunisika kule kauti, ngokuke alukwazi indokbana lunga fana na bantu basi OR Tambo.
So ge si akela oba i consider, it might not be considered now, but it's something that the parliament must look into.
Inga ba indomshambe engenowensi wangoku, kotwa si akeli indokbana i parliamente ilolame.
Okoka de la.
Lastly.
I do hope that ni ibona i challenge esunayo issues of demarcation.
Sia temba indokubana niya ibona imikeli mgeni esija melene nayo nokutandwa kwe imita.
The sooner it demarcation is for consultation, the better. So that we put these matters into rest.
Obanga ba i aputuma londo izasulu ngisele la nati.
Inga ku mbipreparing for the twenty twenty-four elections because it has a direct impact on people going out to vote i issues of demarcation.
Inga ku mbikasi chonga kaloku injengo gosisi ngiseki election zonyaka ka twenty twenty-four.
And I do hope that niya ibono ba there is a challenge already in relation to the issues of demarcation.
Sia temba kana njali indokubana niya ibona nanu bana ukona umkeli mgeni kolomba.
So nisi kwebe lenka kauleza i demarcation ukukuze isokwazu consultant abantu and sisa me by all means ubasima consultant kanga ngoku so that we do not experience in the twenty twenty-four elections.
Please kindly speed the process so that we do not experience such problems when it comes to twenty twenty-four elections.
But I also want to request that nklambi ne parlamente must consider lom tambi okuba i consultation ina bi about bills only.
Sia temba kana njali indokubana epa lamente i jongi sisindokubana uklanga na kwe tu. Kunga teti kukela ngwe imite to eyilwayo.
Kube konanezinye intelezo kutenezengi siba abantu bayafundiswa ngotatwa ngatreb.
There should be other ways that you should come up with so that you ensure that communities are. So that communities, they do take participation.
Because injengo basitweleapa namshanj. People often view that we're here to deal with demarcation board.
Abantu injema be kwelebe laapa namshanj. Bayatwe injekubana bako kui bodi ye demarcation yokandwa kwe imita.
Kuba be kufelenge kubana landiti independent demarcation. Banga I understand ma sizo otangoyilu lom tetu. So it is very important that let's educate our people. Ina ye kela kuutisongo maspala kukela because i resources ina bi ko enough for us to deal with this matter. But as government, let's join hands and make sure that we educate abantu about the processes.
Obu mbanu ngamantla singu khulumente na na manti boonge maspenseki indokubana siyashanga na so that ina bi si ti sodwa singo maspala ba fundisabantu. Kotwa nani bani nezinye inku boesa utenseki sinto bana abantu bayatroitis.
Inkosi kakul, thank you.
Thank you. Inkosi.
Number three.
Mkaza ngapambile datu. Kuki number eleven. Beskala kuse ngapambile umdu esatu.
Eh ay, dinga chinchu number eh ngu number three.
Otada, otu ngu number eleven. Thank you. Honorable Chair, mandi bulise.
Slalo beke kilayo.
Eh intangani so yako. Tikashele kui leadership o wambana yo eh na boonge abashanj.
Greetings to your team and greetings to the public at large.
Elo kubizwa, tunguzamekile.
My name is Zamekile.
Upato Yivani.
Upato, the surname.
Ndisuka kulamshaba wasasajonis.
I am from Port St. John's.
Ndisuka kumbuto wabashali.
I am from the people's organization, civic organization.
Kutiwa i civic independent.
Called Civic Independent.
Ndisuka pa.
That is where I'm from.
Esajonis, nklala ngapambile.
In Port St. John's chairperson.
Sia isupporta le bill.
We support the bill.
Kangiswena tubalite lagui jonga.
We didn't have much time to look through it.
Because si fumeni ngetu kiana nje izolo eh a consuance office.
Because we got it in such a short notice.
Sa prouza nje la ninn sa bonoku tahi i ankomisano.
And we just perused through it.
Si bulele honorable Chair, gendo yokokuba. Si bona isneti sa kakulu ti na ekubeni. Abantu base Port St. John's, bayabeteka kakulu.
Slalo sia bulela kakulu ngale ngale bill. Kuba people from Port St. John's face many challenges.
Singo maspala owa ke wamnini.
We are one of the smallest municipalities.
One watt zi twenty kukela.
With just twenty words.
Kotwa kwe zo words. Asinete agali na kulendo kutwa i equitable share.
But in those words, we do not get any assistance ngoku lingana.
Because imali isabenza i watt zi twenty ebeku ngafanele ngangoku kunchali.
Because the finances go to twenty words and this is not how it was supposed to be.
Apo si kasa kwanale bill, usekubeni nklala ngapambile.
The part that we accept about this bill is.
Be bona ta ujonge watt seventeen eh Port St. John's.
But you look at watt seventeen.
Watt eighteen.
Eighteen.
Watt nineteen.
Nineteen.
No twenty.
And watt twenty.
Zi wadi ezugu te ukritelsikisik.
Those words are far you have to.
Kausia flex staff.
On your way to flex staff.
You turn on your right.
Uchika apengene.
Intabankulu ujonge pa.
Intabankulu is right.
If flex staff ujonge pa.
And flex staff.
Kotwa kutu usekwa Port St. John's.
But those places fall under Port St. John's as far as they are.
That is the unfairness ekoyo kui demarcation A and Z Y.
Ye yo nan di bona kalisukungaligani in the demarcation board.
Kube kona watt thirteen.
And then there's watt thirteen.
Watt fourteen.
Fourteen.
No watt fifteen.
And fifteen.
They are less than ten kilometers uku ya apetulupini elsikisik.
Kamawa zo ngapantsinje oku ten kilometers uku elsikisik.
Kotwa kutuwa zese Port St. John's.
But they are under Port St. John's.
Abantu elo tlaeshi abatati tweni for uku ya eh Port St. John's. Bayofuna i services ebeku fanele baba zitata apa akuchan.
Our people are poor. They do not have the finances to go to Port St. John's.
So sinazo problem ziyolendo si ti sia isupporta le bill kakulu. Iya kusneti sa because even economically kengo. Asinete agali eh Port St. John's.
Ngoko kosho, we are not getting any assistance in Port St. John's.
Abantu basuka ngapa kulusikisik.
People.
Abanyo basuka closer to ulusikisik.
People move far from ulusikisik.
Bayo tata imali eposin.
To get their money from the post office.
Bayo tata imali ekosaasa.
Money from Sasa.
Et cetera.
Nezinye.
Ufumanisai indokokuba.
You will find.
Abasukwazi ukuspenda their money in Port St. John's.
You will find that they will not be able ukus.
Why?
Imali ebeku Port St. John's.
Because it takes inlela esituranga ayo.
Because.
Abakwazi ukutenga imitwalo eh Port St. John's bayipatalele etexini.
Because the taxi fare is far much expensive and they cannot pay for their groceries in Port St. John's.
Apinde kai figa eh port elsikisik. Aipatalele etexini ukukutu.
And then they must again pay for their groceries.
That's a part of unfairness ekoyo. Kulendela demarcation ekuyio. Iyo kalendo si ti nklala ngapambile sia ikalela indokokuba. Itte ifikele mini yokokuba abantu bage bayepaya ezanzu bete demarcation. So that sizo kwasu ukuzi chanda ekila.
This is why.
Ibi kukuti injengo. We support the bill eh 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 singo mbuto wabashali.
This is why Chairperson was saying we want you and your team members to come to the public.
Eh number four.
Eh maskasheleke kwe inkosi.
Greetings to the chief and see.
Si bulise itafi le nez duhlo.
Greetings to the committee and the public.
Lo uteta yo umandi sikatotoa.
I am mandisi totoana.
Uteta esuka esajonis ikuisajonis Woods Forum.
I am from Port St. John's Woods Forum.
Ebonake inga ke kubengati malunge parlamente niyabetwa. Kandi bekufama nibetwe.
It might seem that members of parliament who are bashing you, but that's exactly what you deserve.
Kotwa pankoba ndini betwa mankale ndirecognize. Uspeka ngakanga recognize wenguslala wasasajonis.
But but before I bash you, let me quickly acknowledge the speaker that you did not acknowledge.
Inzua kazi usistribisa mazuza ukona apa uspeka.
Beautiful lady, Miss Tavisa.
Eh ina ke kengo kuslala kuya bona kala ba ikomo nlando itile bill iya yamkele.
The problem now here Chairperson is that it has now became common that we accept the bill.
Kotu ilisho elkona kule bill zitime frames within it.
The unfortunate part about the bill ukukuzeke lo kama tlaeshi ayo.
Eyoka la indokokuba kukaleni na kala kani funi indokokuba maypasise. Nisukenga lendela nisukenga ayo.
The first problem here is that when you want us, when you want to include us in the bill, the way you want to include us when you want to implement it.
Is trela ke indo eti londo kwa i bodi le iza ukwenza obugu schwam schwam. Kasale isenza lendo kutu i consultation.
That that then means the board of the demarcation will not be clear to us or for us about it.
Dineka lage ngoba kala kulu yonke lendo iamba io fika kulendo ibitetwa ngusisi. Oh uspeka walape kutomkapa lentino ukwenza nolo nyolo.
I am worried about this because as the speaker Mamukapha had said before, it is going to affect this.
Nia ikalela ke stalo indo eti. Inga teleboard ngalendela isobe imiswe ngayo. No kama gesisa zindoba ifutele zopolo ti kolechalali kona. Kotu tembesnalo indoba kunet chance ye appeals in the event that abantu abenelise.
What gives us hope Chairperson is that when the board has been implemented. Kuza bakonitlaeshalezi be no kaku senzi wa lom tetu.
Kotwa kengo inyani so yendo ba ikleshaliso bakonana lokokubana baba be.
But now the question is and honesty is that will there be enough time?
Nihalela lendo ke kabentongale bill.
When I had taken a look on the bill.
Di vileapa kutetwa ge ten ge ten year term of office ya law board.
I heard you talk about iminyaka elishumi ya le bodi.
Kotwa ndiboni apbe bill ndiboni five year.
Kotwa ke apa of the document, I see five years, not ten.
Unless ke otherwise ndina mesho ambadwa ndingu mkuambi.
Ngapanje lukokokuba ke my eyesight has a problem.
Indoke ebene pakamelu kui trela ke stalo kasi ifumela le bill si pasisa food.
What I would like Chairperson is.
Ndi trela indokokuba le board because kuya bona kala zininzina ke abantu inbaku uti esballa.
There are many problems that our people are facing Chairperson.
Le board ke ngoku maike inike ezitansaya neleyo ukukuze abantu inuconukuzu abantu bakata tomkul. Bakwazu ku present ina ke zabongendela right babbe ekuekwinda o eziright.
May the board please come to the people so that people are able to voice their views extensively.
O twenty twenty-three usekali.
Twenty, it's twenty twenty-three now.
We are bad.
We are ending twenty twenty-three.
Iklaga kengo welkona indoba kunet timeframe zendisbona kule bile ziti twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
But now my problem is that ukubegole amaklaeshanga le bill.
Nihalela lendu itike ukusuka kui tuapa injemasi ipasisi ifukapo nisazozulaka onaniye nikauleze.
May you please take this into consideration urgently.
So that la board ebene pressure yokubuyize abantu inikuangoku.
So that we put pressure on the board that it comes back to the people with these concerns.
Kude ukaleze ukagindokokuba i K S D ya ifumana nyanlendu ifuna yofuti Port St. John's isyambisa nyanezwa zisoziyambisa.
So that we are clear if the municipality really regrets what it is asking for.
Because le board ndipenseki lenkendo eti iza usifumela si Port St. John's simenga lendela sifunuku manga ayo.
I am certain that this board will allow us to to be as what we want to.
Ay kuba si forsa because za omeka isi zatu ezivakala ayo.
Not because we are forcing it, but will be raising concerns.
Ilaki ke indoba isajonis Woods Forum ayongo mbuto wa politiko therefore ayokunyanga zipolitics.
Port St. John's Woods Forum is not any political party.
Si tike kuloslaloo zo appoint ngu president.
To the Chairperson that will be appointed, suglinged.
Sia bule.
Thank you.
Number five.
Eh inkosi. Eh inkosi. Inkosi slal.
Thank you Chairperson.
Mandi kasele kuma lungu epa lamente.
I am greeting all the members of parliament that you lead.
Kasele boonge abantu abase ulue nilase K S D.
I greet the public in the hall.
Ikamalamdi ngu tribisa mazuza.
Is tribisa mazuza.
Otu nyenjengo somlo moke lama spala wasa Port St. John's.
Representing Port St. John's municipality as the speaker.
Selle etetileke Umamtembu kwezindazo. Kuba i notice le ebeshrot.
My colleague Umamtembu has already spoken about the short notice.
Kuba ta kutetwa ngai interested groups. Kutetwa ngai groups ezifanele kukalisi hlawale zipono nonge before isi zekutoka.
Because when we talk of abanda ba funuku tata ina kleva.
Abawa ngogo layo. Bamenda singa mva uspeka.
May you please lower your voices so that we can hear the speaker.
Kuba kala kulu kasi za katabata isi kibonezi zo ku ifuma. Jengo gosisi ti sia ifuma i bill.
When we take the decisions on the bill.
Kotwa kukfaneleke sibe sikesa ashala kuma kukula. Kama kukula esisa kua ku sifumelane.
It is necessary that we sit down and talk about the bill as the councils.
Bakonake omaspala zigoka ona ne office ezzi zama paramente payasalini. Ka inge ka fiki ite iti kumele i bill. Ikabe ipapa sho konukuza abantu bakwazi ukui ponononge.
People are supposed to be reviewing the bill. There are offices there, municipalities who are able to do this.
Kanga klasali nieke sia yamkele i bill.
We do accept the bill.
Si tike u chapter three, effect has to be taken into account. Ngaske i board is tate into account. Ina bi na zishort cuts because zezinye zezindoe zenzakwe kona umbota.
May they not be shortcuts in chapter three isindose. Wengo kotsobo zipalo ukubasi za kwenzo wangalo.
Kuba ke mnandisuka kula maspala unama councila I thirty-nine.
I am from the municipality with thirty-nine councillors.
Kuse kushote i councillor eli uan ukukuze si kwa zu ukukuze fikelelaso. Nke inku boesenjalo datukaza.
We are short of one councillor that ukaza.
Londo ke sinayo ingolo eti. Pakati kobunani le male esibufumanayo.
We inayo impact. We believe that because we are not getting enough funds, this yakapazela kakulu kulengi.
I lendo ke it determination of fikata kuru kama spala. Na yosi ikasa kakulu isiti ma ikome.
This is why si si ti ukukualasele kakulu kendo kama spala, that must continue.
Kanga klasali nieke i bodi. Kufanele ukufika kua i. Ka ili nza le bill. I jonge neziseko ezisa kakulumente. Kugue woti ezzi ezza obe istika kuzo imita. Kunga because yuwa ti esileleka kakulu. Fma zwa ubeki obeku kui klinikesinbi ni zipuma zonke. Ukoni wadi eparati kwenye wadi byisabenzi sanzima kakulu kwe wadi councillors.
When the board has been implemented, then the structures must be put into consideration as well.
Yes, thank you.
Dabulela.
Eh number six.
Eh mandi bulise. Kuslalo ne parlamente yonke.
Greetings to the Chairperson and the parliament.
Uo ngumdo koyo glentangan.
Greetings to the hall.
Ndisavela akustua dalumzi.
Ikamalamdi ngu dalumzi.
Yivani Wunjiva.
My name is Njiva.
Se name Wunjiva.
Se name is Njiva.
Eh ndisuka eh Port St. John's.
Ndisuka, I am from Sajodisi.
Kwa watt six.
Watt six.
Eh. Oka lanchi.
Firstly.
Mandi andi aske ngoseti tetiwele ndawo ba. Lenda ba e bill ina ti si fumeni se ikasase limkiile.
It has already been stated that it was a very short notice for the bill to be given to us. I got the bill right at the door.
So andi kai fundi bill.
I haven't reviewed it.
Kotwa kuyo yonke lolondi fundi bill ndinga ifunda.
With all that being said.
Dinayo indo nklalela ayo. Indoba. U independent demarcation board independence ya ke alko independent.
I something tells me that the independency of the demarcation board aisukuzimela even though it is stated as independent.
Nihalela ke uba. Nan toni kele bill zeka kunezwe.
Ndeya ikalela ge uba nantoni kile bill zige kuni swen eh kube kona abantu bayekati layo le bill.
May, may.
Koba andina ukwazi uku banditi andi ipasi sindoto sentebefila abantu bangabestibaya ipasi sipil.
May there be people to strengthen and look at the bill.
Beskesa tenji swango demarcation board indoba uza usby zangu may.
We were promised that the demarcation board will call us in May.
What u demarcation board tiina masikangele ivenu.
The demarcation board said we must look for the venue.
Siambesi olanda abantu kwezinda obakuzu at our own expense.
And go mobilize people ngendekose tu.
Tsachalitkonda ndoba.
I just need clarity.
Isayile ndibifambianze kana.
I just need clarity on this. Is this how it is supposed to be?
Eh utek wuncha alustembese ngu may.
Whilst we were still looking at the promise of May.
Wa vela wasuke watula.
And then they disappeared on us.
Ya bonake kukoninto yage atetwa ngabandwa politika ayo eh kwa pagla Sajonis.
Politicians have once said in Port St. John's.
Batile ndo ye nu jengbagende ngomnyawa abandwa funba makube konu chindjoglamaswala.
I am one of the people who want change in Port St. John's.
Tisuwa glindogutwa i woods, Sajonis Woods Forum.
I am from the woods forum as well. I too say there must be limit on the woods to lusikisigi.
Now, ya ti politician lendoye nu sizai, sizailungi sa sizau tetana bangenlagnat.
A politician once said, "We will resolve this issue. We will talk."
Nyani ge iyanze yeka lendongolshoboyenze kanga lo because u demarcation board jema we manesfounel. Akasate uba sa zapinde si, si, si dibane ni ni na.
In whatever way now the demarcation board does not say a word.
Naleo kua kutwe masifuni venue tiina kupinde kutwe mastransporte abantu aba, aba funa uku zo tetana si tetay. I, i andikalela indoba ikoninto ngambi kaku klap.
Then this tells me that something here is not going well.
Kaluku kumele duka kubizimbizo kwezinda ozawa abantu bati aba funu kuba ngabasisa Jonis.
There should be imbizos called?
Koba abantu bona bayakalaza abesa, abesa wazisi ti masi, masi ambes goduk.
Because people are very much concerned.
Sine zizatu zetu nawo banase zizatu zabo.
We have our reasons and they have their own reasons as well.
Kotoa ge koba askateno demarcation board ngoku.
But because we have not spoken to the demarcation board as of now.
Asketenai ngoku.
We are not talking to the demarcation board in this gathering.
Kotoa kupfuneka lekatarin ise imaze zudemarcation board indoba ikonala lendwangayenza ngakabushle kwa sekalin.
But then the demarcation board must be told that something is not going as well as it is supposed to be.
Eh umtemwe bill ge 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 ndi fiki singoba abantu sebekebe.
I will not say anything about the bill because people have already talked about it. Thank you.
Number seven.
Oh, my present.
Because of time, allow me to say all protocol observed.
Bende ku kala kono uni bully sa ngamnyangamnyangubandia nitanda.
I would have loved to greet you all individually because I love you.
Eh mandisa zese ika malam na ndigupumelele kameyitu.
My name is Pumelele Mayetu.
Iska furo samu kuselshomi.
My clear name is Zueli Shomili.
Mnagendisuka kula toropana kutwa i Thoch.
I am from the streets of Thocha.
Panzi komaspala Umbash.
Under the municipality of Umbash.
Ward nineteen.
Ward nineteen.
O sukani sa ward twenty-four wasa KST.
Separating ward twenty-four.
Dipaya njengotseba.
I am there as the councillor.
Bishambi nam mandise ke misekwe ini.
Let me follow saying.
Kukole tochmenti lapagumo abaninsesebeteba ya mgay na mdikalu kutini kwe lo.
A lot of people said that they do accept the document. I also do accept the document.
Masukulele bakokwale kue parliamente pamkueto.
We are grateful for the presence of the parliament.
Ngetemba elitie abantu skonke okubakutomba zayo bakumame.
We do hope that the community, everything that they said, they hear it.
Eh si tensauva indoba kolu mingi mingi kugutwa i parliamente zawila apa kuteta nange demarcation. Sa tiba bungka okuba sutaala simfu ni demarcation board.
Had the call that the parliament will be here issuing out this proposed bill, we said we'll be here.
Yole ndo ubona abantu benga basebeteta kutemarcation board uko.
This is why you are hearing people speaking about the demarcation bill.
Kunge ngayo mtelemgeeni esichokanena ukwenda westeli kuzo.
It is because of the challenges that we are facing in our areas.
Mandikali denzo msezegelo ngalawati ya mdiku uyo itlangani sanabantu base KST.
Let me first make an example of the world where I'm coming from.
Eh ndina abantu paya abanga base mkanduli ngoko kala.
I have, I have people there who are from mkanduli.
Kotoa basbonen sebe panziko mbash municipality.
They found themselves under the mbash municipality.
Ne kupfuneke benza makri nga oba benza itoropi ni funeke bena eti we bafika bati. Ba panziko tseba waso wa twenty-four wasa KST.
Now they have to make other means when they are going to town. They have to lie and say they are from another or rather a different municipality.
Ingosioka alaleo efneke utemarcation board kai fika ai jonge ai kala sele atinga kabuchanga ayo.
That is the first red flag that the demarcation board should look into.
Ndiamba no kaba amkesi soka pagula mandawase Thoch.
I am with my colleagues from Thocha.
Sebetete kwa fagala apa pamkuam.
They have stated their opinions.
Imeko ye tu tiina si Thocha eh singala mobompa napake Thocha. Ustate sa ustatuwa sa obe kwa ngapeshia kumpache uikala uibo na kui imeko e convenience.
I can safely say that our situation in Mbash is really inconvenient.
Zingani nzikidionozbala abanya bebe sbalile ukala nje kui male oi patala ukusu kate Thocha osi Mbash.
There are so many concerns. One of them is the money that we spent from bash to Thocha.
Uba amshalenga pamilunga kuyepa kui government departments esetocha obuze indoba si reporter apil si katalba si ekuenda onba si mtata.
If you can visit Chairperson in bash, they will safely tell you that we report far away from in bash.
Ndeya katalalba le onkelendo ifunutadili ngale.
This tells you that this needs great intervention.
Ilishwa ge kulendo yonke elukoyo.
The unfortunate thing here is that.
Ukuti ngelkaja kusenzua indwe righti ku considerate i political arrangement.
Aguzawenziwa indobumela bunje ku jongwe isi lesezopolitiko.
Asikali tiina ukhalela uku buyla koma nyamabomvane.
This is not the first time we want to return back to amabomvane or Mtata.
Kodo ange ngaye politics selo li ngela panza.
Because of the politics, that arrangement did not succeed.
Ndeya ikalela kubango mnyawa abantu abati zake nikaleze ni, ni ngande imeko ye politics within lendokuba zonas i jongi imeko estalagoyo.
I want to be the first one to say that please do look into the politics influence.
Sibulela kakulu indoba smenali tuwalo kusitetela.
We are grateful for this opportunity that we are expressing ourselves.
Nestne temaloba yonke lenditetwa ba ifikela kuntebe zivaya.
We do hope that everything that is stated here will be taken into the parliament.
Ilishwa ge njenga abantu enibazi onana abantu aba city.
Unfortunately.
Kwa u baungeva abantu ba penelikben ba bonakali se anyindoku zegulunge.
Should not this be taken into consideration? We will, we are headed for disaster.
Asikaleli ke kuleze kufukele kwezoma.
We do not want that to happen.
Ndi mela uku paga misalondo.
This is why I am standing here. Lastly.
Tio kwa uvilu mingi mingi ultetangemetro.
When there were issues about metro. We were grateful and happy about that. We hope that it will be a success. Thank you very much.
Eh number seven, number eight.
Madwin.
Greetings.
Eh ndingunsikalelo malhlati.
My name is Ntsikalelo Malhlati.
Eh ndipuma kwa pay Thoch.
I am from E Thocha.
Eh. Di, di akatashe kaka kuba nesisfia zoka la elulaluin kotoa intelenenza ngayo ah, 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 icho.
I am really worried because you are in the forefront when it comes to decision-making processes. But the way you are leading, it's really worrying.
Why ndisicho?
Why am I saying this?
I landuza i advert ya le meetinga namshlanje ifike kui four days. Kwa abanya ifika isolo ani kwasanga uku marketer kui, 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 kui. Kui institution esmkuu eseni kwasu uuzmanipulate.
Indoinkalabisa ayo kukuba ani kwasanga ukwenza ngakresha abanya abantu bafumane ismemo kuintzukunje ezine.
Dingavu ya mna chasnochonipeka singa bami, singa bemi basa South Africa.
I would be really pleased that if we get the respect that we deserve as citizens of South Africa.
Lendo stetanga ayo apa namshlanje itrapazala impilo zetu nakasane.
What we are talking about today greatly affect our lives.
Kotoa ibonakalba kukona abantu bafakishi bobo kuba banins abantu bangayasi yole ndo susinga ayo namshlanje apa.
But it seems like some have no idea of what is happening today because some have no knowledge of what this bill is all about.
Eh siayasi ge impilo esihlala yo es South Africa uku ba. Amakresha mane zitakusenzua izindo uye governance here to isenza la for e correspondence.
We know that most of the decisions and everything that happens here in South Africa, our governance does it for correspondence.
Siya ekela ge lena njengba si approve nje ingati kanti enzero nje ma kutuasusemenzile for today.
We really do appeal that now that we are here voicing out our opinions, it's not just a by the way type of a thing.
I transparency balikiile es South Africa.
Transparency is very significant in South Africa.
Konakonake mnagendia i approve le document and indwelikisayo kulendo yo badingu asetocha.
I do approve the document. The funny thing that I'm from E Thocha.
Indoba yonke i exit engena edolopini yami asetocha ivaya mkanduli.
Is that?
Ena yiko enye ilali eh around i Thocha nakasane.
It's that it's exactly around. We do not have any other village outside E Thocha.
Mandi shiranza.
Let me leave you like that.
Eh number nine. Eh mandisbulisele nam.
Greetings.
Eh ndinguvyani kamente.
My name is Vuyani Mente.
Ndisuka pagula mandla wase Thoch.
I am from Thocha.
Kua ward number thirty-two ngapesa nseka seluandla.
Ward number thirty-two closer to the sea.
Lawardigele yipan ziko maspala wase mbash.
That ward is under Mbash municipality.
Indo zavkala ngayo nje kuti ubandi ya pagula maspala wa mpay mbash.
I will, I will first start by saying.
Funa kandile kutexi eni kutexi eya pay dujwa.
Whenever I have to go to Mbash, there's only one taxi going to Dujwa.
Eni taxi moya esuka Dujwa ya Thocha.
There's one taxi returning from Dujwa to Thocha.
Oku ba zikposile kesa taxi funa kusa u, 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 u abuso uchige Vigisville lo hayike Vigisville.
If you missed that taxi, it's so unfortunate because you have to go to Vigisville.
Taula pe Vigisville kesa ufigile Mtata.
When you are at Vigisville, you are closer to Mtata.
Kamlekse tano kudose du sanza Pemtata no kongo pungulekona ngayi pungulekle na ma lezo isebenzisukuya kumaspala wa.
If our activities were Mtata, you wouldn't spend so much on the taxi fare.
Siavu ya ke ta kukolo mte to o, 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 oza opasisuayo namshlanje.
We are grateful for this proposed bill.
Koba kalo ku izau snetera kakulu tinasi ngabandwa se Thocha.
This will greatly assist us as the residents of Thocha.
Eh any inconvenience ebakona kuti singa banwa se Thocha nant.
Another inconvenience is sebenzisakshumu singa banaba Thocha ile.
Ufuti idu mdo se Thocha pay Thocha go home affairs.
You take a picture of your ID at the home affairs.
Tasu funa kuitati rilandi le kufuna kuitata kuka jani.
When you have to collect it, you have to go all the way to Eka Jani.
Uza ukwena ke Thocha no taxi layo iambia kundu kujwa ujwa utate ya kuka jani.
You will connect from Dujwa to Kajani.
Inconvenience kenale.
That is a great inconvenience.
So le, le, le bill lenasi i kasa kanga go ko si i support.
We greatly support this bill as the residents of Thocha. Thank you very much.
Volande layo, number ten.
Next one, number ten.
Ndeya sedenzana.
I just wanted to check if the mic is working. Greetings.
Eh ndibulisakulu kumdu ongokoyo ape uluini ngokunama inaki za keka ini azomamela apa.
Thank you to everyone who's here today.
Eh. Mandi bulere kui konga elizos nipakeela.
Let me express my gratitude to the committee.
Dinga talukalanga umni namni. Not mentioning eh, exactly.
Not mentioning e individually.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Eh okala nechona mandi bulere kakulu man.
Firstly, thank you very much.
Mandi bulere kakulu ngale presentation.
Thank you so much for.
Eh izindrezi nje zindresi njenga esinyabashali.
These are the things that we need as community.
Eh actually zindobe fala ba from nineteen ninety-four. The fala ba zindoka le kwa zizo ezzi ingabisindro reactive. It's unfortunate that we are reacting.
These are the things that should be taking place from the year nineteen ninety-four, not only reacting.
Siya reekta ngogo with each way sheen.
Siya pendula kui mogao zetu ngoku.
We are late.
Silate ekashen.
But then better late than never.
Kora ge kunono ke ubekona ngakresha ba unafiki.
Mamelani ke majort.
Listen very carefully.
Indokaala, indokaala.
Firstly.
To really address abantu.
Ukuse kandute tetana abantu.
Kui plaitabo. Land question.
Kuinga ge zabo.
Land question. Makale ngomshaba ulabengosi nomshaba ulabengosi ningosi asisela nganga olomshaba.
You must take the land from kings.
The land question from the king. Ah, askazu tata.
No, as we cannot take it.
Ndeyindani tetayo.
What I'm saying is.
Politicians.
Polit.
Politicians. Consult.
Maba tetane.
Nengos.
With the kings.
Koba abana lunga nomshabi politicians.
Because they have no right of the land.
Exactly.
No.
Number two.
Okue spini.
I fully support i project. Yes, a Luandla. Yes, a Pot St. John's. I fully support that project.
Ingaso ya se Pot St. John's. Ay dingi support ku dala silindiile.
Ku dala silindiye se Pot St. John's.
We've been waiting forever.
Ku suke la uwe kote songe that where our wealth is.
Ubuche bibetu businzekolo Luandla. Ubuche bibetu businzekolo Luandla.
Ima ngani kase longe beni selipi.
I'm surprised. Where have you been all this time?
Beni selipi kase longe.
Where have you been?
Auskare langbumban.
You didn't tell us your name.
Ni tende wampinga umawawa.
I am wapinga umawawa. I am wapinga umawawa.
Dilapa abeni cres.
I am from Hillcrest.
Ke ka eh Dujwa.
My hometown is Dujwa.
Mbaase.
Mbaase.
Ma jok, pagamzaniaw.
Pull up your socks.
Pagamzaniaw.
Pull up your socks.
Yeah, choga.
Listen.
I'm, 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 I'm here.
Dilapa.
You're wearing many hats.
Di mwe mwaze mniinzi.
Emi nini, mwaze ningamre. I'm a military veteran, I struggle for this land.
Diinwela.
I fought for this country.
Diinwela.
Under the banner of the Ben Africanist Congress, I fought for this country.
Diinwela.
Patsipa poko, gumshaba.
Diinwela.
Masina chigilesi ini umshaba we tu gut.
Let's not turn around. Our land is for us.
What to do with our land?
Si kuyke Luanjana, basenzen toni gumshaba we tu.
Come on.
Isanga pambi le umshaba ngoe tu sanu stateli si kryibo.
Eh, number eleven. Eh, masanga ngoliwa roso kubileka lo gumshagas.
Let's not make any noise.
Number eleven.
Eh, madisbulisa mtsal ngapambi.
Greetings, Chairperson.
Nditi nganga nensibaza.
Allow me to say all protocol observed.
Yes. Eh, ndilapa njibu Golani Ndamo.
My name is Golani Ndamo.
Katalinjebo. Eh, ngapambili.
Chairperson.
Tiza uteta ndiylosa, kuba andezu uteta ndindi maapa.
I won't say much.
Tibanjwa ndisea kweni ndonge phone ikumkani Abatembu.
As I came here, I was approached on the phone by the, the Abatembu king.
Yes, utige ngogumake ndizo mamela apa kukindwe kutwa, uyayikubapa.
He said I should come here, there is something happening in this house.
Le ngua tindi tibana na yape mnyango.
I got this as I entered this house.
Ti, ti kulelegendi asama, uku chongba kutwa ni kota kendi aybonuba. Yipili. Tiza uyesa aginje paguye. Eh, kotwa mandivakali sinkala boya ke.
Let me greatly um, say, voice out his consent.
Yes. Eh. Kotwa ndivumeleni nditi mshaambi, sin- sinetala njie, silicon mkuulu. Kuba sifesi kutwa nantsi in-inalani soli, i- 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 ilolshobo.
Allow me to say, maybe we have this frustration as the traditional house because.
Nde ngoba ndilapa.
As I'm here.
Eh, ande, ande yevoketwa ngoe Mtaata.
I've not heard anything about umtata.
Mshaambi ubusabi zeban basa President Jones lu siki siki na Etkocha.
Maybe you called a resident from Etkocha lu siki siki and President Jones.
Eh, negosi ebendi ibonila payalape Mtaata ipumili ngoku.
The Mtaata king just walked out?
Chief.
Chief.
Hmm, eh, king iwa.
There's only one king.
Eh. Kotwa mandivakali se, indala boya ke ngoku.
Let me voice out his frustration.
Eh, eh, oba ni, ni, ni tekolo, ukubisingosi, nisibisele apa kwe initalani so, engas.
You called chiefs without him knowing.
Kotwa kendi za ocho indoba na esingatela se Mtaata sakabi isu.
But I must say that chiefs from Tata have not been called.
Eh, icho gelondo, lendo befuna ndi, ndi, ndi beke apa. Icho i, tiza ikosa i, imwi pa. Ndi, nditsibele, kujjo ebekewa iteta watisende itete enoni ngitis.
I will summarize everything that he said to me, which will bring a great contribution to you as the committee.
Yes, nde ngoba nizo, taganga le bill apa.
As you are tabling out this bill.
Nde mamaya le kabanu beteta.
I've listened to people's opinions.
Bateta kanyele ndo ayiteta yo na.
They are saying the exact thing that he said.
Nge mika, yes, what?
About the demarcation of wards.
Eh, i politicians asfigile pagomkuulu.
Osolo politiki, they came komkuulu.
Beo kaza, ngemetro eh 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 ni eh iyila yo uku bana.
Ngomasbalombadka esingachindokbana oyake.
Mshaambi ke tatu kaza ba befigile kuwa ba chuba utini enanga lo mtiinbi.
Maybe they came to you, Mr. Kasa, to speak about this matter.
Ah, eywaye teywaya i kaza, emtwe metro.
Kotwa. Does support the bill part?
Yes. But eh, watige indawe stile, ingasen shio ngapantla.
He said that certain areas should be left behind.
Utatuni indawe stile.
And take some.
Ee siku ngatetwa ngoe aso.
The ones that have not been discussed here.
Andezu sasakena.
I'm not going to mention them also.
Because funa ye na aku iwe kuwiye.
Because it wants him exactly.
Okanya klabizi.
Or when he is called.
Um, utige.
He said?
Be kunova njani ta, ni no utatila ali nde ngoba zinjalibe ziwati.
How would it be if you take the areas as they are?
Goba niya ifale ndo, abantu bayasukme zeka kuleme ko niba beka pansekuwa.
Because people are in great suffering under your leadership.
Ande na iteta ngapiyo kukuba be itetile, na ba, ba sugawes ndau ba sugus.
I cannot express their fashion.
Injalala.
Frustration any better. It's like that here in umtata as well.
Kotwa ke mandinga tijitka shalilo ndi initalani ngoe Mtaata because katakatezo Mtaata.
Let me not waste any time speaking about umtata because no one has mentioned umtata.
Eh, msha, manditige, ndiyakela na.
I'm appealing.
Ningasbisinosi ninga, ninga tika tanga ngoku.
Do not call upon the chiefs without speaking to him, especially the ones here in umtata.
Mshaambi ke na tabeni za obanpintala ni solu shoba pagile du lupiaki.
Maybe if you had a meeting in his township.
Genimasisi.
You should have alerted him.
Goba, ni bonakala nga niya pugutango.
Seems that you are losing it now.
Usboni ngati du lupiaki ya tatwa ngoku.
It's like now his township is being taken away from him.
Chao.
It down.
Eh. Eh, gos, mtsal ngapambi.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Eh, number twelve. Eh, ndanga nensibaza. Tingu Welcome Guenyi.
My name is Welcome Guenyi.
Isuka ku dholopane kutwa Etkocha.
I am from the town called Etkocha.
Etkocha ke ikumanspala was Mbaase.
Etkocha is under the municipality of Mbaase.
Unge ilishwa ke mtsal ngapambi, goba, se kutetwa greetinga Etkocha apa.
It's unfortunate that everyone has spoken greatly about Etkocha.
Eo ba nga tishtepindwe.
It will be like we are repeating the same thing.
Kotwa na pay Etkocha ndesuka kwa wad sixteen.
I am from wad sixteen.
Dilapa ke. Ogokala kuko le doki menidi pete.
Firstly, kuko eli pepa ndidi pete yo.
Namje kabanta kuwiye tuntbena yape mnyango le doki men.
Just like some who have mentioned, I also saw it as I walked in the door.
Eo ba nga tishtula kitu.
It will be like we are singing a song.
Kotwa ke eyo ndondi iba lekle yo ndizele apa.
The most important thing that brought me here.
Ndapakamisisa ndali so figelo tu.
I lifted my hand.
Insungu ya se Etkocha.
Is the pain ya se Etkocha.
Epantuko Mbaase.
Anda Mbaase.
Etkocha ngokwa kukuakua yo.
The establishment of culture.
Kokobuzebayo, inmellele na Mkanduli, ngomkandisoswa kabo vana.
It is closer to Mkanduli, the nation of Amabomvana.
Kokwenze la ke gamaspala.
The municipality way.
Ya tata ya beka panzu Maspala was Mbaase, o-otibansa i Dujwa, no Gajani.
Was taken under the municipality of Mbaase, connecting i Dujwa.
Ya kamla apa oke inkonz.
That's when it was receiving a service delivery.
Egunzima kaku, inkonz oke uku skumana.
Which is hard to receive.
Ota bamsebe tetile ngaso apa.
My colleagues have also mentioned that.
Kotwa namdi ngendidi itzo.
I can also say that.
Goba insungu cha mna.
It's a pain that I'm also going through.
Icha mna ndi, ku beka buka abantu bantala abanga kwa zyo, uku suga ezanzeluandla. Be ya kukajani bo tati ayit zabo.
It pains me as young as I am and I wonder how much more it's affecting the older ones.
Ungenalo ndo, i amblesesesemenzapagoza tewile sismadwalini.
To testify that, the ambulance that we use from Eldageni to Oartambo.
Ibonakalisa ke indo noko eh ngantkabushle oba masibekmaspala o wasembaase.
That greatly shows that we should not be under this municipality.
Galoma azisya tela mtsal ngapambi kaku ndoba uti makesin kaefiga. As noko ayosala naati pa Etkocha.
We do appeal, Chairperson, that the demarcation, when it arrives, it must come to Etkocha.
Ufuti nimkele, siya nasba noko nengayenza londo le, ngabantu batebekle. Oba anga, obunisindenga, nbanikubunisolo mangasi veysol ndoba nisaapa.
Please do plead with, take consideration the timeframe.
Elali sa se Etkocha, zizi spalukesi, ezige kulu ngokoma gumshaba. Siyakela kasi ya paya noko, atatis palukesi stile, nezpalukesi stile, anga ibiseli Etkocha ndaweni.
We have impromptu infrastructure in Etkocha.
Goba sa ihalala le ndo le demarcation esikotwa, no demarcation portikabushle, asale figile paya.
We want to discase this failing.
Simbiselenzungu si, si kaza pagu.
So that it can also feel the pain that we are feeling and frustrating on you as the parliament.
Diya islega katseli papansi, ingati besifonesele, ndoba masisomakulombo. Kotwa gangaspona insungu ndeja lbeswe banisime ngabantu basa Etkocha, sime apa kulumbo.
Our views are all the same, you'd swear that we made phone calls to each other.
Galoma zige, nde ngoba besenstile ndali nditbena le doki menipaa, mnyango, and if undanga kotwa ke, oba kutwa yipili, diya yamkeela etetenge demarcation, sitmakesu demarcation, galoma zukosi.
As much as I didn't go through the bill, I do accept the bill, thank you very much.
Number eh thirteen. Eh, gos mtsal ngapambili, man tatal tuwa ke.
Thank you, Chairperson, I take this opportunity.
Ah, ndinibulisano.
To greet everyone.
I would like to say protocol observed.
Bulisa kuya wonge wuntu.
Eh, ndingu Mlungi Selleli Ziduli.
My name is Mlungi Selleli Ziduli.
De meli pastors fellowship, Etkocha.
I represent pastors fellowship, Etkocha.
De ngomfundi.
I am a reverend.
Eh, sisentlungu nige, engateteki yo paya.
We are in much pain.
Imeko, ekumbo, endikumboza, amasrael, ekuna zeleke chiput.
With this situation that is reminding me of the Israelis in Egypt.
There are so many things that are not happening as expected there.
Ininsa kindu kobe kayo, yenze kangelele ngafanekanga, bayenze kangaayo.
Ota bamsebe itetile.
My, my fellows have already talked about it.
Asisinje, asininsi.
We didn't.
Kubasitanda.
We did not come as many as we did because.
Kotwa sisa gesminzi, ngonga sisbona sisiapa.
We came here because of the concerns.
Because we are not happy at all.
Asonwaba ngakwapela.
The way si tritwa ngayo.
Inlelenispetengaayo.
Nentlela inkonz o esisangaayo.
And the way that the services are delivered or are not delivered.
We are not happy at all.
Asonwaba ngatu.
Siya ngwenela ke sishtoba.
Our wish is.
Singwenguesa kana jalo oba kukoa posonekona.
And we apologize if there is any wrongdoing on our side.
Ogokuba, kla kutjongwa le mita, nati sijongu.
When you look at this demarcation, please consider us.
Siyasnoba yipili kutetwa ngayo.
We know that for now, this is a bill.
Almost all of us, we accept the bill.
Uninzi luetu apa riya ulamkeela.
Siya mkeela sinjalo ke.
Even though we accept the bill.
Siya bona indoba inendwe kwenza no demarcation.
We do see that it has something to do with uku tandwa kwe mita.
And currently, you are not the demarcation board.
And ke ogwangoku, ni nanisheli apa ani yipu diu tandwa kwe mita.
But thank you very much for accepting us.
Siya bulela ngokubani samkele.
Singa abantu apa abanwenela kukuba sibuyele back to umtata.
Our wish is for us to be back in umtata.
Eh, just to establish the metro.
So that uku misa rumaspala ombata?
Eh, asna ayu ngitlelesno beka ngayo.
There is no other, other way for us to put this?
Ku dala skala kutemarcation port, lijela listatu evi.
Now, this is the third conservative time we've raising our concerns about this.
Amakela mabinikanga so.
The second, the two times were not taken into consideration.
Sitembasa o, you are goku.
I wonder if this will be taken into consideration.
Chegamfundi sekendine kalewa.
As a reverend, I'm very much.
As nganga o, you are ininsi ndenoke.
If we were not considered, then a lot would be a problem.
To the extent that kuy nyangeza, sabesino umtandas.
Kuba kutbeke ngengaya leme ko kuy nyangezayo, we are going to have a prayer session.
Ikona kedyetie prevention is better than cho.
Ikona kedyetie tuku zukusela, gala kukoko no, gunoko ayakonyanga.
Kukole ndo demarcation board, demarcation bill. Kuya bonakala ndoba ngano demarcation, nigenisale, goba non kenino demarcation pakat.
There is demarcation board, there is demarcation bill, but at the end, all this is about demarcation and we request that you all sit together and discuss this.
Demarcation, demarcation.
Demarcation to demarcation.
Meaning that, sekenyo se reportela pay ndoba, asisale kweke, siya buye.
Please report to your leaders that we are serious about this matter.
And abantu bangenza nandoo to this extent.
People could do whatever they want to do.
Therefore, at the end, we support the bill.
Ngoko ke siya uklasa lumte tu yilwayo.
The next speaker. Madisbulisa umshala ngapambi.
Greetings, Chairperson.
Eh, ita file yonke.
To the whole panel.
Eh, nabashala bonka bakona pehulu.
And the public at large.
Eh, lume pamguinu. Lumme pamguinu.
My name is.
Ubransby.
Bransby.
Hughes.
Hughes.
Tis lapake ST.
I am from KSD.
Ifuna u concertizer ke iste tibesme apa.
Ifuna njeke uku tetan, ngoe iste tibesme apa ngapambili.
Kuba and melanga KSD.
I am not here to. I am a community member of KSD.
Ukwenze ndoba ngendemvesite arayfa mdoza KSD.
So that it is clear, I heard him said he never heard any of the people from here, abativle from KSD.
Tiso participate.
Tiso tata inalamapa.
Madibulele ogokala, ngoe consultation process, yipili.
Thank you for, oba kobe ko utetwa no, ngoe woyala lumte tu yilwayo.
Tekenda ambatru, some of inda apa kuletochume.
I read through some parts of the document.
Beni nganakla shalenele, kotwa ndabona indoba noko, inte mandizo ipasis.
Even though I did not have much time to read or to go through it, but I am adopting the bill.
Tiza ngwenela ke owsbi ni kukuba.
My wish is.
Tekobi se, ite demarcation board.
That encourage, the demarcation board.
Le, le ime apa pamguitu.
That right in front of us.
Kuba i experience yetu, kulo kulumente, wet democracy esipilaguyo.
So that governments' experience in this, in South Africa.
Kuba ite demarcashi, sasikaza lo indoba, yenzelo indoba isoklinsegisa kulumente.
We were, we were told that the demarcation is here to ensure governance.
Olululo.
Strengthen governance. Access to governance.
Ndoguna ke si paula indoba.
But we have noticed.
Kuba mvnu wet demarcation enzuayo.
After the demarcation.
Obakona imbalenses organic, obakona, ugungeniliseki, ogukulu ebantu.
There is imbalances and people are not satisfied.
So namke nditimandi rechiske, eh ya.
Raise my concern as well.
MVu, ngokubani, paselipi.
After I have adopted this bill and supported it.
Yo, uku ba, ngomya, abantu, aba, bey victim.
I am one of Amakoba.
Kui, bilinje, e bisanda, uku passeswa, eh, kui, tamarcation, bisanda, passeswa, nje, eyo, kudela.
Of the recently passed demarcation.
Just recently before the, 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 the local government.
Ngapambinge, go, nyulohulumente, ba Makaya.
Ndoguna, oke, sage, sa, tutuze, lumto, ayile, limwabino ro.
But we had comforted a person who was at the wrong, wrong funeral.
Kuba, ke, is fiklo, sa, semele, ne eklingba, sesi fiklo, sa, gus.
Because the funeral were close by, they went to a wrong funeral.
Wa zo kape, sa zo kape, la, ba, ayman, ke, ne, gus fiklo, sa, ro.
Then we noticed, puti, no, 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 you are at the wrong funeral.
Sa besesim, tutuze.
But then we had already comforted the person.
Diagnina, ke, idokba, nam, ndibeke, ingagi, am, ndzengba, njalba, bende, y victim, ulohobuluni, apa, KST.
I do not want to raise my concern as to how I became a victim in KSD.
Kotwa, ke, amso, kutu, chikuzo, wenzu, bange, ney mini, kowe, process, sese, lande, lo, yao, isofikele, la, kutemarcation board.
I believe that one day, the God will make her to be at the Demarcation Board.
Ndisu, na, ke, uktela, kakulu, uktobi, sa, ukti.
I plead with you.
Eh, itemarcation board, after yenze, le, process, ya ikiba, yenze, i, nduka, i, consultation, kaibuya, ya ikiba.
After the consultations with the Demarcation Board?
Yezi, wayakatewa, nginto.
After they have finalized everything?
Sia kela, ndoba, bage, ba, 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 ikensekisele, ndo, yo, uku ba, i implementation, ya, yonke, ndo, besoi passeswa, apa, i, i, aba, funa, na, abantu, aba, ana, be, the sense, kwalen.
May you please ensure the implementation of this bill and that it is going?
Go ba, uku ba, be kuwe, angwa, ngente, siti, ma, be, ni, nenewenzua, le, kavens.
If it were for me, I would say you as this panel, go and do.
Go ba, lenze, la, ni, twa, ngsenda.
As you have stipulated in the document.
Itelugbulela, ngapambi.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Kabula. Asiso, upendula, ngejegu ba, si kope, apa, beskola, kolanja, manangu.
As the panel, we are not going to respond, we were just taking up your concerns and jotting them down.
Korage, singa, paula, nje, eh, ezis, kalose, nuzoba, ibe, bufiga, kate, ngabelelo.
We will take into account that this, this notice has been given to you very much late.
Eh, besesitumelu mialezwa, makoseni, ati ona, apa, la, omshawa, standa, tu, ka June.
The officials said they had already done the, given the message on the third of June.
Kotwa, ka, izukoa, kalo, ndo, apa.
But we will not have a discussion on that, we have noted it.
Kowe sbini, kukoke, lomshaka, sebe, tete, likumka.
Secondly, there is this gentleman who was talking about the chiftancy.
The king.
And the kingship.
The king, Abatimbu.
Of Abatimbu Nation.
Si, notile, naale, ndo, yo, kuti, uyachocha, uba, singenangemva, apa, kulenda, o, yabo.
We have noted that the king has concerns about us not going directly straight to him.
Eh, na obasi, ngayasi, kotwa, ke, ufanbaskoli, se.
We truly apologize for that.
Si, tumelu mialezwa, ndona, se, pumile, ngokoti.
We are sending a message?
Olu, fagano, milomo.
That the interaction?
Sizayo, kibapa, ngaye, twenty nine, ka August.
We will take a decision on the twenty ninth of August.
So, itetu kuti, sisa, uatu, mama kosa.
That then means we will, we will depart the officials?
Ngabelela, ne, ne, kumka.
To communicate with the king.
Sive sifunda, ke, ngokuba, ne zi, ni, kumka.
Then we will learn that the other kings?
Sicho, uba, ngokpa, lela, na, lenkuboe, tu, sia teta, korana, ngokpa, lelo, sia funa.
Then we want from other kings as well, about the process that we are doing, help to be, to have a hand in it.
Kuba, sifuna, eh, intatonakeba.
Because?
Engenas, kwaslima.
Because we want interaction and support fairness.
Ipeksage, ke, nagomaspala.
This also says to the municipalities?
Ukona, uspika, wa, se, Pot St. Jones.
Pot St. Jones Speaker?
Abatena, bo, uku ba, be kuwe, ngomweno, abo.
Had said, according to their wishes?
Bebeseno, kala, panse, bengomaspala, bavenzi, info, esipwansu, eh.
They would have discussions around this issue.
Na lapo, ke, sia, meema, uba, masifuma, nimba, lelo.
We invite, we invite your concerns in writing.
Namakumkwa, zemele, awanga, tikanda, kona, apa.
And independent organizations that you may find around here.
Eh, na, o, goloshobo, uku ba, bane, ndo, aba, funu, ipala, na, ngamakosa, etupha, ekali.
If they have any concerns, they should just tell our officials over there.
Gamanya, masu, aguko, mdusifunu, gumshiya, ngapantle.
In other words, we do not want to leave anyone outside.
No, mdozauti, ande, ga ifu, nde, ga, kshele, tochume.
Or anyone who's going to say, I have not read it, well?
Maga ifu, nde, afage.
You must read it and raise your concerns.
Then, ke, sisa, usuke, lapo.
We will take it from there.
Ungenja, lo, ke, sia, bulela, kakulu.
Thank you very much to the public.
Galentatonakeba.
Thank you for your interaction and support.
Eh, sia, ifa, lumialezwa, kibela, uyagu, Demarcation Board.
We do hear the message that you are sending to the Demarcation Board?
Titingba, si, tati, lelo, ndoba, sisa, utumelu mialezwa.
And we are taking into consideration that we will take it up to our leaders?
Ne, saskalose, iti, satenji, swa, kwatulu.
And the, and the concerns that we promised things, but then you say we disappeared and not responded.
Sisa, utumela, riomla, le, sa, aba, na, utula.
We will convey that message.
And eh, sivile, naale, swala, yase, kocha.
We heard about the rush from Kocha?
I kocha, eti, ifunu, kumke, Mbaash, isemtata.
We heard concerns that you people from Kocha want to move to Um Tata.
Eh, ndichilokba, aniteti, anikali, kumabo, ro, ngokotwa.
You are...
Asinga, abo, abanika, sibokpendu, ro.
You are not speaking at the wrong funeral, but unfortunately, we cannot respond to that.
So, sisa, uku ba, kalaela, si, ba, kalaele, ne, uku ba, kaka, kage, ngatyalwa, kungu, ngakawles, ba, fikke, apa.
We will convey the message and the implications of not them taking this urgently.
Eh, lo, secretary, ke, we, parliament, we fangu, we are, kaza, ndoba, isasi, sositini.
Unobala, where parliament is supposed to be telling me about the notices? The Secretary of Parliament, please?
Devuna, isasi, subagukin, isasi, so, announcements.
Do you have any announcements? There's a microphone, right behind you. Chairperson. Go, sishalo?
Oh, I see something that the, the ladies outside want to give to, to the community.
Thank you, Chairperson. May you please say that again, Mama? May you please repeat that?
Sorry, if everybody can just stay seated, um, they'll be bringing something in for the community.
Kutolo, nduka, uku banisale, panse, kwa, ngalomzuzu, kwananjie, ndo, nisa, yufumana, engunanana.
Eh, gamanya, masu, ke, kutwa, ninga, paga, mi, apa, eh, ada, ne, o, ye.
In other words, please stay seated.
Ngokwa, se, parliament, eke, agu, kwa, mkelo, fefe.
In parliament, we don't do grace?
Uvele, kutwe, lomte, mbibe, singa, awo.
We are done.
Upelile, ya, kritaga, la, ke, intlangani.
Thank you.